Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, or is being undertaken in a manner which would capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in the meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
So now I ask each member to introduce themselves, starting by myself. I'm Alan Woodcock, I'm representing East Ecclesfield Ward and I'm today's Chair. Tony?
Sorry, councillor Downing, councillor for Mossborough Ward.
Janet Ridley, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Laura Moynihan, councillor for Manor Castle.
Mark Whitaker, also councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
It's councillor Brian Holmshaw for Brumhill and Sherravale Ward.
Mary Anne Elliott, Green councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Good afternoon all, councillor Gaddy Wetherall for Shire Green and Brightside Ward.
Good afternoon, Dennis Chapman, councillor for Mossborough Ward.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Richard Williams, Member for Stanington Ward.
And Jill, we have apologies from Mike Chaplin and Laura, he's representing Mike, or substituting for Mike, and we have apologies from Henry Nuttig and Brian Holmshaw, covering for... We have no items, let's do it just passing public, no decorations of interest. Right, come the others, we listen to previous meeting, start on page eleven, then write them by. Take it, that's okay, no, thank you. Site visits, they will go to members' diaries, as and when they are ordered. Item seven, tree preservation order number 475, land and building owners, very site at 196 to 198 Shirebrook Road in Sheffield. So I hand over to the officer, thank you.
Hello, hello, I'm Tashi Fletcher, Community Tree Officer, and I'm standing in for Vanessa Lyons, Community Tree Officer for planning. So, first thing to note is there is a small typo in the report in paragraph 2.1, as the TPO 475 was actually made on the 25th of January 2024, rather than the 24th, as it says in the report. The TPO itself is in Appendix A. So, tree preservation order 475 was made on the 25th of January to protect a mature beech tree at 196 to 198 Shirebrook Road. Vanessa Lyons attended the site on the morning of the 24th of January, having been alerted to tree works about to take place. She, along with another community tree officer, undertook tempo assessments of the tree. They produced scores of 18 and 17 respectively, which both sit in the category 'definitely merits TPO'. The tree owner and tree surgeons were informed that the TPO would be made and that once this occurred, it would be an offence to damage the tree. The tree surgeons declined to start work and left the site. There has been one objection to the TPO which was received on the 22nd of February by the owner of the land on which the tree stands, and this can be seen in Appendix D. The objection is that the owner objects that there is potential damages likely to occur from the tree to the drainage system, which is less than a metre away, and to the adjoining property, which itself is less than three metres away from the tree. This would cause issues of liability and cost, which the owner feels they would be unable to meet. Concerns were raised about the size of the branches that overhang the highway and the potential to damage or injure vehicles and pedestrians were they to fall. And finally, the owner claims that the tree is not unique and a replacement would be planted, and that the tree has become unmanageable for its existing surroundings. The tree officer's response to this is that the tree was due to be removed on a speculative basis only, and no evidence of damage to the adjacent house or underground services has been provided. Where encroachment of branches towards the adjacent property has occurred, these have been pruned to give clearance to the building, and in a manner that has not overtly detracted from the visual appeal of the tree. This operation can easily be repeated, subject to a TPO application seeking consent for the works, and this will negate any damage caused by encroachment. No evidence has been provided that the tree has damaged nearby drains. Research supports the view that tree roots generally do not break drains, rather they exploit weaknesses in them, wherein tree roots can grow in pipes in search of water and nutrients. Homeowners may prevent this issue by keeping pipes on their land in good condition. The presence of a TPO would not prevent owners from maintaining their trees or addressing safety concerns posed by the trees. It only requires that work to protected trees be subject to consent from the council upon an application which is free of charge. This is not considered to be a substantially onerous process, or a reason why a TPO should not be made or confirmed. Each application would be judged on its individual merits, however, the current condition of the tree and the position of the branches over the highway is not regarded as posing a risk to safety which would necessitate the removal, nor is it deemed to provide a reason as to why the order should not be confirmed. There have been three representations in favour of the TPO made by members of the public. To summarise, these are: the tree is one of only a few mature trees on the street and offers beauty and biodiversity to wildlife, as it houses many different species; the tree helps to improve air quality, as the tree stands between two main roads; it is a significant landmark, which brings diversity to the street, and engineering or pruning solutions may exist which could address the potential damage. And there is also a visual amenity assessment included in the report. In terms of visibility, the tree is a mature beech located directly adjacent to the highway at Shirebrook Road, and therefore clearly visible from numerous vantage points along Shirebrook Road, and from further afield, as the tree is visible from a distance from Mearsbrook Park. The tree is one of only a few mature trees on the street and is visually striking part of the street scene, as demonstrated in images found at Appendix C. The condition is overall very good, there are no obvious visible defects present at the time of inspection, and the tree has good vitality. The retention span is conservatively estimated at 20 to 40 years. The tree is an important feature of the local street scene and is identified as a local landmark by those who live locally and who have spoken in support of the tree's retention. In conclusion, our recommendation is that the provisional tree order number 475 be confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Tashi. We have two speakers today, first being Kate Bevan. Kate Bevan.
She's the lady that's not here yet.
Who hasn't come. So, the next speaker is Gerry Rivers, who is objected. If you come to one of the desks, please.
Is the microphone on?
Do you press the illuminated button on the front of the console?
Yeah, pressing button on the right.
On the front of it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for listening to what we have to say. The tree officer mentioned that there'd been three representations in favour of the tree protection order becoming permanent. In fact, we had a petition which 115 people signed, and numerous letters, I don't have the exact number, but numerous letters were sent to the council, so in favour of the tree protection order being permanent. So that's a slight discrepancy with what was said. So, this is the tree under discussion. It's a mature copper beech, estimated to be at least 120 years old. It's a rare amenity on an urban road without any street trees. It's a very well-loved landmark, it marks the changing seasons, and it's a beacon of biodiversity in a time of environmental disaster. Its significance became clear from the massive and overwhelming community response to the threat of it being felled in January this year. As I said earlier, many individual letters of concern were sent to the council, and I hope those have been seen. A petition in support of the TPO was signed by almost everybody on the street, 115 householders signed it. That included the residents on both houses immediately adjacent to the tree, households in both directions, and everybody living opposite. And during discussions with longstanding residents, as we went round talking to people, we heard all kinds of stories about children playing games around the tree, people meeting together in its shade. Locals spoke of it as a well-loved friend. This tree raises people's spirits as they walk up and down the street. People watch out for seasonal changes and really rejoice in the wildlife that the tree shelters. And not just established householders who own their own houses, local tenants, resident for quite short times sometimes, have spoken about its beauty and of the significance of the natural world. And sometimes people like this have really disrupted lives, but really value the greenery around them. The tree forms a really important link in the wildlife corridor that stretches across Mearsbrook, up through Cat Lane Woods, into the Gleedless Valley and beyond. There's a chain of varied trees weaving through the urban environment, and it supports a wide range of species. This copper beech, a rare specimen, is a key element in this chain of trees. It's an established home to a diverse population of bees, birds and insects. People are currently noting owls, nesting robins, finches, tree bumblebees and moths amongst its branches, and of course it supports mirages of smaller unseen inhabitants. It stands on a popular inner-urban street, characterised by almost every architectural style of the last four centuries, but without the benefit of any street trees. It's a really exceptional example of how beautiful trees can complement the streetscape, enhancing its unique character and complementing the built environment. As everybody here knows, environmental changes are one of our greatest threats. We're constantly learning about the central role of trees in combating pollution, and every single tree counts. This tree's making a significant contribution to the struggle against climate change, it provides shade and helps to cool the air as temperatures unfortunately rise. And a large tree like this will be storing a substantial amount of CO2. We need more mature trees, not less, we cannot afford to lose a single one. And we know from experience in Sheffield that it's no solution to replace a tree like this with young saplings, which take many, many years to provide such benefits.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you for listening to us, and we now urge the committee to save this important tree by making the tree protection order permanent.
Right, we should have had a speaker again, Kate Bevan, but she's not here, so we'll now move to members' questions. Tony?
Thank you, yes, it's a fine specimen of a tree, looking at the pictures here, and it should be retained. The only one question I would ask of the officer is, you say that there's no damage going to be caused to the drainage, what evidence have you got to support that?
Well, we haven't done an investigation on the drains, but nor has the owner of the property, so as it stands, there's no evidence of damage. And if evidence of damage were produced, then we could come up with a plan for resolving that, which in the first case would involve repairing the drains, as the problem generally happens when roots move into drains that are already damaged, and then to seek water and nutrients. If the drains are well maintained, then the roots shouldn't penetrate.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, yeah, thank you Chair, I mean, it's a beautiful tree, but I just have one concern, there's a bit of a lean on it, are we absolutely confident that it's not going to fall and do serious damage?
So, trees grow in all shapes and sizes, and some with quite dramatic leans. The accepted wisdom is that if a tree sustains a lean for a long period of time, then it has put on the strength in the places it needs to sustain that position. So, it's only if the lean is a recent change that suggests that there's movement in the soil, or perhaps in the stem itself. So if there was evidence of recent movement in the stem, then that would be something that could be considered in an application for works for the tree.
Thank you, that's very helpful, thank you.
Do you have an adequate tree pruning plan?
So this is a privately owned tree, so it would be down to the owner to prune the tree as and when that was necessary, and once it has a TPO on it, they would be required to put in an application to prune the trees when they wanted to do that, and that would not be reasonably denied where the application was reasonable.
Thank you Chair, just a bit of an observation really, I mean, on another day in another street, this tree could have been cut down before the council knew about it. I know in conservation areas, trees above a certain size, you have to get permission to do something with them. Is there any possibility that we could possibly extend that? Because I said, this could have been cut down before we knew about it, so whether there's a possibility of extending that requirement to get permission to do something, to cut down a tree in advance, is that something, you know, not necessarily for today, but for consideration going forward?
Tashi?
As far as I'm aware, that's determined at national government level, so there'd have to be a change in legislation relating to planning for tree work, but I do sympathise with your viewpoint.
Anyone else? Well, can we move to the vote please, starting with you Tony?
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the tree preservation recommendation.
For the recommendation.
For the recommendation.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you, it's a really comprehensive report, and it's a unique tree, so I'd be very happy to say I'm for the recommendation.
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Yeah, I'll support the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Thank you, TPO has passed, thank you very much. We now move on to applications under various acts and regulations, we have three applications today. From the agenda, we have moved one of them, which is, where do you want? Application number 23/01882/4, Ecclesfield Primary School, High Stores Road, Sheffield. We've moved that right up to the first one to here, but I would like you to take five minutes to read through the supplementary, because we didn't get them to be able to read before starting the meeting, so I'll give you five minutes, because there's quite a bit in it. Thank you. Primary School, High Stores Road, Sheffield, S17, LG. Thanks Chris.
Thank you Chair. So the application is at Ecclesfield Primary School, and it's for the erection of a multi-use games area. This red line here indicates the application, the extent of application when the application was originally submitted, and I'll come back to that in a moment. But the, people who know the school will know, it's accessed off High Stores Road via a narrow entrance towards the top left-hand corner of that image. And then it's otherwise surrounded by residential property, mostly semi-detached properties, with rear gardens facing to the school grounds. The school therefore doesn't have much presence in the street scene, physical, visual presence in the street scene. The application is, as before you, is for the multi-use games area, which is in the southern part of the site there, the larger element of the red line. The long, thin bit of the red line to the right-hand side was a running track that was part of the application initially, but was withdrawn partway through the process. So this is now purely for the multi-use games area. An aerial view there indicates, you can see where the areas of grass are, and that's around the school, and the larger portion there at the bottom, where you can see the grass has worn away, is the location of where the, is broadly the location of where the multi-use games area would be. It is 45 metres by 30 metres in dimension, I'll just skip to the plan quickly first and come back. So it's, I'm sorry, it's been a different orientation now, this plan, but it's 45 metres by 30 metres, it would be surrounded by a 1.2 metre high boundary treatment that consists of 700 millimetres of kickboard, for want of a better description, on the bottom portion, and 500mm of mesh on top of that. There are some associated level changes, you can just pick out, beyond the green and to the red, at the edge of that plan, elements of cut and fill, because at the moment, the site slopes, I've just moved to this here, you can see that it's fairly limited changes. The greatest extent of change from an area which is already a raised embankment is about 1.4 metres across the whole of the site, but the cut and fill exercise is fairly limited. And if you just go back to the images, the site slopes very gradually, from sort of north to south and east to west into the bottom corner, bottom right-hand corner there on that image. So it's currently open grass within the school grounds. As I say, it's surrounded by dwellings on all sides. The garden depths are in the order of about 15 to 20 metres to the edge of the site, just to give you a bit of understanding of context there. The school's intended use of the facility is for school use, for before-school activities or wraparound services, as often referred to, and after-school activities that are associated with the school, and the general day-to-day operations, the school PE functions, etc. There are things like after-school clubs which occur, sometimes delivered by the school themselves, sometimes delivered by people, clubs that come in from the local area to present those sessions, but it isn't intended for community use. In terms of the key planning issues, it's open space in the UDP and it's urban green space in the draft plan. There is no conflict with local or national policy through the provision of the facility, because it isn't removing the open space, it's providing a facility within it, but it's for a use which is akin to that of open space and the either formal or informal recreation value that that offers. So there is no policy, direct policy conflict with it. In terms of visual impact, for the reasons I explained previously, there's no impact at all from a public perspective, i.e. from the public highway surrounding the site. There is clearly a likely visual impact from the rear gardens, particularly of the properties to the south and east on that image, that directly face the area of the site. There'll be a change from an open grass feature to one which is more artificial and more formal, with a clear, flat plateau. That said, we don't feel that the change in appearance of the site is a significant detrimental impact, and we also bear in mind that an impact on a private view is generally held in case law to not be a material planning consideration. There is a potential for noise and disturbance as a result of the facility, be that through slightly more intensive play, or more concentrated, or should I say, more opportunities for viewers of play, because at the moment, the site can only be used when the weather allows, and when the surface is dry, not slippy, etc, muddy, whereas this facility will obviously be able to use for more of the year. So there's an increase in the potential use of it, but given that it's not involving community use, the number of people that can use it isn't increasing. The kickboards themselves are recognised on facilities such as this to present an opportunity for a more kind of annoying sound, but they can be acoustically treated, and there are conditions recommended which would deal with that, and have been used satisfactorily elsewhere on other facilities that are used slightly more robustly by kind of adults in the evenings, We don't feel that in terms of other kind of residential, normal residential amenity considerations, such as overbearing impact or overlooking opportunities, we don't feel any of that occurs here that is any different to what occurs now with the relationship with the existing school field. Ecology, impact and tree impact were also a consideration through the application. In terms of trees, these have been, you can see, you can pick up on the image there, some trees around the edge of the site. There is a cut and fill exercise, but the position, an angle of the pitch is such that the impact on the trees is minimal. We've assessed that in line with the findings of a tree report, and with our own tree officers looking at that and investigating that, we feel... we feel that there is no significant impact likely on the trees, although are recommending tree protection conditions through, through construction. In terms of ecological impact, this is important to note, this application predates the mandatory biodiversity net gain requirements. Although within the MPPF, the National Planning Policy Framework, prior to that, there is a requirement to avoid a net loss and, and to, to seek gain. It's clear that replacing grass with an artificial surface will reduce some limited value in that grassland for, or in that grassed area, that grass play area, for biodiversity. But we don't think that's hugely significant and we think that that can be adequately compensated for by additional native planting taking place within the school grounds, which the school have agreed to and are happy to, to implement. The other main issue that was raised in the many representations we've received was that of drainage. And this has been considered in some detail and the report sets out in some detail what the approach is there. But in a nutshell, it's a clay-based area of the, of the city and the site is clay-based and that's why it gets so wet and, and becomes a problem currently. So the approach here is to ensure a permeable surface both in the, the, the top surface, the, the artificial grass, if you like, of the, of the facility and also in its, in its subbase, such that water can permeate through that, through both of those and then be collected and would be taken to existing drainage runs which are just to the, just to the bottom side of, you can see a, a public footpath, sorry, not a public footpath, a footpath that runs through the school from kind of left to right there, just below the buildings. That leads then to a large attenuation tank, which is, it's difficult to point, to point with this, but to the right-hand side of the main school building is a very large attenuation tank that was put in when the school was recently extended. That has plenty of capacity, the assessments have confirmed that. And so the, the twin-pronged approach, if you like, of the permeability, improved permeability and collection of water to divert off-site through an attenuated system, it seemed to be an improvement over what, what is there now. As I said, it's not intended for community use, condition 10 on the papers secures that, although there is an addendum to that which I will come on to shortly. Highway implications were the final matter that was raised in representations or significant matter that, that related to planning considerations. But our view is that if there is no increase in community activity or no community activity and it's purely for school use, and that it's purely to improve the facility for school use, then there's, there's no basis for an increase in, in traffic, Chair. So that's the essence of, of the proposal. Just very quickly, this is, actually this is the area here where the attenuation tank is, where, where that image is taken from. And that's looking down towards, in, in between the group of trees, you would see the corner of the, the multi-use games area. That is also in the very bottom corner of the site, so you can see the relationship with houses there. They overlook the site, as I said, there's a distance of about 15, 20 metres for most of those gardens. And that is the area where most of the, the, the multi-use games area would be situated. You can see there that the ground has been, the grass has been overturned with mud through play. And that's a panoramic shot of the, of the whole site, which is somewhat distorted, but, but gives you an impression.
I'll turn briefly, Chair, to the supplementary information. I won't read through this verbatim because members have just had an opportunity to, to read it themselves, but what that identifies, it's item one, is additional representations both from Olivia Blake MP and from Ecclesall Primary School Mugga Action Group. Olivia Blake's comments are identifying points raised to her by constituents and they are set out in the report in any event. The action group comments are relating to the application and also in response to the main agenda report, Chair. Most of those, we feel, are covered within the, within the report, so there's no need to sort of repeat those. But there is a, a response on, on a few other points raised. So on procedural matters, there's a, there was a concern that there should have been a revised application or revised notification following amendment to the scheme. And as we say here, where a scheme is reduced or the potential impacts of it are reduced in line with, well, first of all, there is no need for a fresh-up planning application, that it's, it's capable of being amended within its, its original submission. But also, the council's code of practice for publicity on planning applications identifies quite clearly that where a scheme changes and it doesn't result in additional impacts or it's in response to planning concerns, then no further notification is undertaken. There is a concern that there was no pre-application engagement. But whilst that's encouraged by the MPPF, both in terms of an applicant contacting the planning authority and also the, the community prior to submitting an application, it's encouraged in the MPPF, but, but it isn't mandatory and we can't, we can't insist on that, Chair. There is reference to setting aside or not considering certain trees, T4 and T7 I mentioned there. But unfortunately, the, the tree report and the application drawings don't tally in terms of referencing. So the referencing of these trees on this plan don't tie in with the numbering system that's been used for the tree report. So it's not clear which trees have been referred to there, Chair, but I think what we would say is we've given those, the impact on those trees full consideration and are satisfied that, that the works aren't of a magnitude or of a form that are going to cause any harm to the trees in the long term. And then the final point to make on, on that particular matter is that there's a suggestion, there's a deliberate ruse, to use the word in the, in the representation, to avoid Sport England compliance. Sport England did comment on the application because they were consulted on it, but they are, they are not a statutory consultee because the, the land isn't actually a playing field, it's defined in the Development Management Procedure Order. It's not a delineated area as a sports field or marked out, in other words, and it, it's too small. It's less than 0.2 of a hectare in area, and as such, they're not a statutory consultee. They also confirm Sport England that their playing field policy isn't therefore engaged. There is a further section on that within the report, so I won't, I won't go over that, Chair, and all other remaining matters are addressed. There are some amended conditions, condition 10, as I suggested, has, has been amended to, to simplify it and, and remove some possible double meaning in the, in the wording, Chair. So there's an amendment to that condition, but in essence, that is, that condition is ensuring that the facility is used by the school only and for school-related activities. There is an additional condition to require maintenance for five years of the landscaping, which is, which is a standard condition that was omitted, Chair. And also a further condition to ensure that there is level access provided to the, to the mugga, to ensure access, ease of access for all users at all times. Which also brings me on, Chair, to the final point, which is public sector equality duty. Some of the representations indicated that the development wasn't inclusive, particularly highlighting concerns that muggers can be recognised as excluding girls. I'm sure members are aware of the public sector equality duty which is set out there for, for consideration. We've, we've considered all the factors set out in, in the, in the equality duty and we've concluded that the, the development with the conditions that are recommended does allow equal access for all users without any significant harmful implications for any particular group, including users with impairments and other protected characteristics. So, sorry, that was quite long, Chair, but that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Chris. We have two speakers against this application. The first one being Tessa Lupton. Would you like to go to another desk, please, Tessa? Yeah. If you press the button on the right, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you, thanks for your time today. My name's Tessa Lupton, I'm a parent at the school and I'm here today to represent a large group of parents and residents that also object to this application. They're going to be watching online, but through work commitments can't attend the meeting right now. So our objection is about the destruction of a natural green space, which is a playing field for children to play on. Sport England, the only official sports consultancy, twice in writing refused to approve this proposal. Sport England's view is that the benefits of the alternative provision do not clearly outweigh the loss of the current use as stated in the report, and this goes against paragraph 103 of the NPPF. This was touched on a minute ago, but that, without them, even if they not recognise, as the gentleman stated, Sport England still hold that view. The Football Foundation also commented that they will not support this application. They will only support applications that play on grass or AstroTurf, which is also referred to as 3G. That is not going to be this, this surface will be made of a polymeric rubber crumb type. So neither Sport England or the Football Foundation or the FA in fact, support the use of this. And the Football Foundation objects to the loss of a grass playing field specifically. The school has already been expanded in 2018 by 1500 square metres. The new mugga, 1400 square metres, is almost the same size as that whole expansion. The new mugga is also four times the size of the existing mugga that the school already have. We as a group claim that this is a massive overdevelopment of the site. It's loss after loss after loss of green space which is precious to children and all people in the community, the school should be protecting that. The land is defined, as gentleman said, as urban green space where children currently play freely. Gentlemen also referred to it as not removing open space. We completely contest this, it is the removal of open space because what would be left is an artificial surface that's caged in, it's not open. The children currently enjoy the privilege of going, coming and going as they feel. Cartwheels, handstands, natural, free imaginative play, that is not going to be possible if this great big cage comes in. So the planning officer report also states that they're going to lose 20% of the usable space. That's not true, we've calculated it to be 37.5% of the space due to a huge corner being cut off that the children won't be able to access. If the school say they can access it, how is that going to be supervised? Also, a slope in the school is already taken into consideration within this calculation, but it's not usable space. The children at playtime and lunchtimes are not allowed to go, if you're looking at, I know you made a site visit yesterday, they are not allowed to go to the left, anywhere near the slope, on that big long strip. So if you're thinking about it, please don't take that into consideration of children's space and free play space, they're not allowed on it. Even though there may have been children there yesterday, that is not the case during playtimes and lunchtimes. The UN right, the UN Convention, the right to free play, they state is not an optional extra, it's fundamental to the physical, emotional, mental wellbeing of children, it's intrinsic to their health and happiness. So how can that be ignored? Girls do not feel safe in a mugga space, it's well documented by numerous bodies. The planning officers have dismissed this because it's not a public space, citing that it'll be supervised accordingly. Well, in the mugga they have now, it's already problematic, girls don't feel safe. My own daughter has been near on strangled by a boy with a hula hoop, saying that it's not, she's in his space, she's not allowed to play there, get out of my space, it's not an isolated event. So yeah, the girls are just not safe and also other people, not necessarily just girls, that don't feel safe or comfortable in sports with balls, even though the school have mitigated for this and they do put different activities on, but that just shows that there's a problem, the fact that they've had to ban football from this space. I just think, what message does it send to our children?
Your, your time's up, thank you.
Oh, sorry, can I just?
I'll let you wrap up.
If Sport England cannot recommend this, how can, how can you approve it today? Okay, thank you, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Our next, next speaker is Matt Dilly. And again, Matt, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, hi, hi everyone, my name's Matt Dilly. I'm a parent to a child at, at the school, I'm also an environmental consultant, I work for a sustainability firm. I want to cover three things today, I want to just give some context to this application. I want to pick out some aspects in the case officer's report and then I want to focus a little bit on sustainability. In terms of context, 10,000 playing fields have been lost in the UK during the 1980s and the 1990s, hundreds have been lost since to development, so this isn't an isolated case. This is, this is a gradual erosion of, of playing space. And I think we have a duty to protect that space, particularly for our children. I'll pass this image around, this is, this is an image of the, of the, that was submitted as part of the planning application for the extension of the school. It's taken in the south-eastern corner and this is the area where the mugga's going to be. The school, or the planning application, shall I say, is, is promoting the field in its image as an asset. But it seems that now that they want to take that away, and I think that's, that's mixed messaging. Is it an asset or is it something that surplus to requirements? I think we've talked a little bit about consultation and stakeholder engagement. Tessa and I are here today. We, we represent a large group of concerned parents and residents and what I would say is a lot of parents have been too scared to, to voice their opinion because they're afraid of repercussions. And, and I think that's, that shows the importance of having proper stakeholder engagement at, at the start. There's a lot of people listening online who are supportive, afraid to, to raise their voice. In terms of PR report, there's three aspects I want to bring out, drainage, biodiversity and loss of amenity. In terms of drainage, the case officer just said that there's been an assessment that the tank on-site provides sufficient capacity. Now, I've not seen anything in the planning documentation that, that where there's a detailed assessment of, of the drainage system. What is said is that there's an alarm on the tank and it's never, it's never gone off. Now, that's not a quantitative assessment by an expert of whether the tank has sufficient capacity to handle the additional water that's going to come from, come from the mugga. It's right the source of low permeability, the slope towards Edel Road, those properties are vulnerable. There's been two cases already of flooding of those properties and those, those residents are duly concerned. So drainage is critical to the viability of this, of this proposal. I think it's, it's not right to... I think it's not right to protect or to consider drainage as part of a pre commencement condition, should be part of the planned application proper. And I think as a bare minimum, this application needs to be deferred until a proper risk assessment and drainage assessment is completed. On biodiversity, the planning application says that this is neutral, but what is missing from that is that the wildflower meadow that's been constructed as an argument to offset the loss from the grass was actually removed a woodland area, a nature garden that was previously there. Also, we need to think about the loss of nature or the field during the expansions. This is excessive loss, this is net loss of biodiversity on that school over a number of years. In terms of loss of amenity, Sport England recommend that development or this type of mugger shouldn't be within 12 metres of residential property and ideally not within 30. The corner of the mugger, the southwestern corner, is 3.4 metres from the wall of 66 Huntley Road. We talk about mitigations for noise against kickboards. Given the proximity of that structure to the residential properties, we don't think that noise abatement measures are going to be sufficient to reduce that noise. Just quickly on sustainability. The overarching aim of the NPPF is to ensure sustainable development. Now, in my work, when we're assessing sustainability proposals, we look at three pillars of sustainability. It's environment, it's social and it's economic. Tessa's already touched on social, so we quickly talk about environment. I've mentioned biodiversity, there's a net loss on site. One thing that's not apparent in the application is that this is a significant cut. This is, I estimate, 1,200 tonnes of soil, got to be excavated out in order to create a flat platform. That soil is, there's a national and global crisis with soil health and the loss of soil due to erosion. Where's that soil going to go? Is it going to go straight to landfill? I think that's probably the most likely option. That's not sustainable. And in terms of the surface, it's rubber crumb, it's made by fossil fuels.
Sorry, thanks, Matt.
Okay, just finish this point, sorry. It's a rubber crumb, it's made by fossil fuels and after eight to 10 years, that will go to landfill. I think this is poorly thought out, it's unnecessary and it's unsustainable proposal. And we strongly recommend that it's not approved today. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Chris, would you like to respond?
Just a couple of points, Chair, because a lot of it is matters that I discussed briefly in introduction, but also are already in the report. In terms of the Sport England involvement, as I said at the beginning, they're not a statutory consultancy and they haven't raised a formal statutory objection. They have, they've confirmed that their policies don't kick in because it isn't a playing field. I think that's the key point. A lot of the comments that then followed in Sport England's comments were about guidance around, if we were talking about a high level sports facility, what that ought to be delivering. And I think it's important to remember that this isn't, first of all, isn't a loss of a playing field and it's providing a multi-use games area within a school. It's not intended to be a replacement, a loss of an existing sports facility or the provision of a high quality new one to a development of sport. It's a school facility. Obviously, it has those benefits, but that's essentially what it's there for. And so the involvement of the Football Federation, it doesn't really come into this because it's not a facility that's designed to grow football within the city, it's a school sports facility. I said at the beginning that this does involve the loss of the grassed area, but replacement with a facility that will enable better enhanced use for the kids who are wanting to use it and are using it through PE and things like that. It enables the school to deliver their PE curriculum, which is perhaps restricted somewhat now. So there are benefits in that regard. I can't comment on accessibility to other areas of the site and whether the school has a requirement or a desire to restrict access to certain parts of the site. But I think in terms of things like people not being able to do handstands and cartwheels and what have you, I mean, you are able to do those on a site like this, but also there will be other areas of the site that are available, that aren't covered by the facility. There is, I know the speaker made reference to it not being accessible, but it is available for use for those purposes. There are also other informal areas around the school, quieter areas, if you like, if play is too boisterous for children's liking. In terms of the second points that were made around the drainage, we have, our drainage, the legal and flood authority within the council have assessed the proposal, have advised on it, it's been negotiated through with the applicant, changes have been made. So we're satisfied that a good level of assessment has been undertaken, Chair, and of the kind that is common with the vast majority of applications that we consider. And indeed, in terms of flooding to Edel Road properties, we're of the view that the arrangements that have been put in place should limit the surface water runoff in that direction. As I said, at the moment, it's clay based and it encourages that because of the slope of the land. The speaker also mentioned a net loss over a number of years in terms of biodiversity and it's unreasonable to ask one current application to deal with that, Chair, and not a reasonable requirement in terms of the planning process. We deal with each application on its own merits and we acknowledge that there will be some loss of existing biodiversity, as I explained earlier. We think that's minimal and will be compensated for by planting that is subject to a condition in terms of detail and we can ensure it's of appropriate species, et cetera, and is maintained to ensure its benefits. I've also talked about the noise as well previously in my opening comments, Chair, so I don't think I have anything else further to add.
Thanks, Chris. With members' questions, please. Janet.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for all the information on that to officers and also to the people who have spoken today. It seems to be a very complex proposal. Lots of different aspects of this have been brought up, but I just want to focus on one thing that I'm hoping I can get an answer to. Because I think what concerns me here is that in what's acknowledged to be a climate emergency, we should be doing everything that we possibly can to retain our natural green spaces. So I'm just wondering, and I'm not sure who can answer this for me, but were alternatives to this proposal considered, which would have involved retaining a natural green space? And if not, why not? And if so, on what grounds were they rejected in favour of creating an artificial service, surface? Because I just wondered whether or not the substantial financial investment, which I imagine would go into creating something like this, could have been perhaps considered alternatively as investing in what appears to be a long term, rather poorly maintained natural green area and getting that up to spec so that that could be used instead. So my question really centres around the balance of why would we sort of be looking towards an artificial surface and not looking at, you know, what should perhaps be the default option to retain where we possibly can and enhance natural green spaces? Thank you, Chair.
Chris?
Thanks, Chair. I think perhaps short but not too helpful answer is no alternatives weren't considered. We, when we receive an application of this nature, it's to assess its impact and consider whether we feel that is acceptable, whether there are any clear policy objections, et cetera. We didn't, the proposal is for a mixed use formal games area. So the option of, if you like, not doing that and putting that money elsewhere into maintenance wasn't for us in terms of considering the planning application, Chair.
Thanks, Chris. Ryan?
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I just want to thank the applicants for letting us come and have a look around the school yesterday. It was a real joy and I think, you know, that's the best word to use for it because we saw the children playing out on the space, basically playing out on the green space. I saw skipping, dancing, cartwheeling, handstanding. So it is really important for those who are here, it really came across how much that open space is used. So thank you for letting us see that. I've got a couple of points for consideration and one question. So just following on really with regards to the climate implications. In our own playing pitch strategy, which we passed in September 2022, my colleagues on the Communities Parks and Leisure will remember, we acknowledge that we support the council's ambition to be net zero, net zero by 2030 through the protection of grass playing pitches. It goes on to say, you know, ensuring that open space is retained, especially if its uses for playing, this benefits nature and provides opportunity for flood alleviation. So sadly, we've heard that, you know, a more natural, you know, sustainable solution wasn't considered. But I do think we need to bear this in mind. The NPPF paragraph 11 also states a presumption in favour of sustainable developments. And really, there is nothing as sustainable as grass and particularly soil. And paragraph 103 identifies playing fields as areas that shouldn't be built on unless benefits clearly outweigh the loss. This loss surely needs to be considered. So on the loss, I mean, it's clear that some children enjoy structured games like football and at school yesterday, we saw maybe 10% were playing with balls, but the huge majority were just free playing. And I know equality has been raised by many people, including Miss Lupton, and it's almost been dismissed in the officer's report at page 189 and also in the supplementary. Obviously, football is open to everyone, it's not gender specific, but we have recognised in this council that muggers do cause equality issues with girls much less likely to play in them. We recognise this in our sports and leisure strategy, so I just wanted to raise that. Again, our Communities Parks and Leisure colleagues will be aware of it, but that was something that we considered as an actual evidential fact. So I just wanted to raise that in our obligations under the public sector equality duty. But I will get on to my question. So it's just about drainage. This to me seems like the big one, really. I think notwithstanding any conditions in line with the two-stage approach, which is outlined, this really should have been dealt with in advance. You know, drainage is, it's clearly a major flood risk, standing water is already an issue, clearly the water's going to go downhill, so this has major implications for the nearby residents. As Mr Dilly states, there is no quantitative detailed assessment. So as a bare minimum, this decision, I would suggest, needs to be deferred until an expert report is produced.
Thanks, Chair. I think going back to what I was saying earlier, our view is that it has been assessed. It's not that we've just set aside the drainage concerns and recommended a condition, Chair. If I can just have a moment just to check the wording of the condition. It's condition four and typically it requires full details to be submitted before approval. But that approach is typical to request the full detailed measures, having agreed the principles based on assessment of what is likely to be the case. So it's not guesswork, it is kind of an assessment of the current situation of the surface area we're dealing with, of the capacity of the systems. And the condition just requires more details of the, in particular, the fall actually, across the playing surface to ensure that the connections are correct. So it has been assessed. It's not, as I say, it's not just a hunch that we think this will be okay and we'll recommend a condition to secure the details. We've satisfied ourselves of that before going any further with it, Chair.
Just to come back on that, I mean, I understand you say it has been assessed, but with all due respect, groundwater engineering is a very technical issue and I don't know whether we can rely on this assessment. I mean, it needs to be a thorough technical report by a professional in the field, I would suggest.
Yeah, well, our drainage team have, our professionals in the field have assessed the situation in terms of information supplied by the applicant and their own knowledge and records of the site.
Tony? Yeah. Being as the school is in the middle of a very large, largest community, actually, why has there not been any consultation from the school with the residents in the area being undertaken? Thank you. Chris?
I can't answer that, Chair. I can only speak for the council's planning authority in this role and our publicity has followed our guidance and statutory requirements. It's for an individual applicant to decide what level of consultation they want to undertake in the community.
Thank you, Chris. Chris?
Thank you, Chair. Of the remainder of the space around the school that's not going to be taken by the mugger, how much of that is actually usable for kids to play on? Is it all usable or there are areas which are steep slopes or some other reason why they can't actually use it? Thank you.
Sorry, Chair. From a general perspective, I'm conscious that one of the speakers talked about limitations on areas that are out of bounds for children, I'm not aware of those. But in terms of the green areas on that plan, on that photograph, sorry, pretty much all of it. In the north of that, the top portion of that drawing, there is a kind of a formal seating area and a covered area, a bit of woodland planting, the small nature trail through it in the top corner there as well. And then as you come down, the kind of irregular shaped bit is somewhat sloping, but then again, sloping banks can provide opportunities for play. There is quite a large green space as you come down towards the corner of the largest building there. That's relatively flat and available, as far as I could see, for use. The games area would then take the shape of that kind of, sort of the foot of the boot, if you like, on that image. And then the space between the edge of the red line and the left hand edge of the plant is also sort of informal green space. So pretty much all the space to the right and south of the building. Chair, if I can just finish what I was saying, I'm just answering the question in terms of what space appears available for use, in terms of the Chair's question.
You've had your opportunities, thank you. Let the officer speak.
So Chair, just as, the, the question was which areas are available, uh, that, I think the question was which areas were available that aren't, um, going to be enclosed with the, uh, with the, with the games area. And, and there the areas I was describing the, the site and what, from my observations yesterday, uh, on a site visit and the previous visit to the school, uh, were, appeared to be generally available for use.
Thanks, Chris. Look, I've got Mark next.
Thank you, Chair. Um, right. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much indeed for the speakers. They were very well presented and professional arguments and very persuasive. But what concerns me is one of the main functions of, uh, education these days is to try and instill in children a lifelong, uh, love of sport and exercise so that that lasts through the rest of their life. This is mainly done through more structured and, um, organised sports. So what I would quite like to know is what is in the minds of the people who want the mugger? I take on board what the lady over there was saying, that if people, if there's just groups of lads shooting hoops in the mugger, that could be an intimidating environment for girls. But if the idea is for organised netball, basketball, five-a-side, et cetera, to be played in the mugger, that would be inclusive to girls. And what can, what I'm interested in mainly therefore, considering this isn't a playing field, presumably they have access to other fo- playing fields for football and stuff. But if there is a potential for this mugger to dramatically increase the amount of educational exercise that could be inculcated into the next generation, then it could be overall beneficial. Thank you.
Chris?
Uh, Chair, uh, the question was, you know, what's, what's in the minds of the, of the applicant effectively? And I, I can't answer that. Um, but, uh, and neither can I advocate, uh, for them in, in my role in, in giving you these answers. But, um, there is a, the, the school has explained that they have, uh, an issue with, uh, capacity at the moment for delivering things like the PE curriculum, um, which would be more formal generally. Um, because of the period of the year when the, because primarily, uh, the periods of the year when that piece of land is, uh, is either not usable or, or far from ideal. Um, so the provision of the facility will mean that, that those activities can be accommodated much more freely, um, without impacting on other functions at the school. Um, and, and in that sense, there is an opportunity to increase at least the regularity and organisation of those, those functions that you, that you referred to. Um, the school, again, I'm not advocating for the school, but to try and explain, uh, trying to give an answer to your question. The school have explained to us in the submission that, uh, it, it will not be just for formal play. Uh, it can be for a number of different sports for formal play. But it won't be just for formal play because, uh, at, um, at break times, um, such as some of the members saw yesterday, uh, then it will be open, openly accessible. Yes, people might be kicking a ball about on it, but on the other half, that doesn't stop someone from doing something that's kind of much less formal, if you like. Um, so I think that's as much as I can, I'm saying in terms of what, whether the school's intentions are, Chair.
Thanks, Chris. Brian?
That, thank, thank you, Chair. Um, I did pay a visit to the site yesterday and like my colleagues, uh, who came on the site visit, we saw an enormous amount of free play. Free play is extremely valuable. And this site, previously known as Echolsaw Playing Fields on historic maps, is now a much smaller and very precious open area. It's designated as open space in the local plan. Um, uh, in the local, in the emerging local plan. It's designated as open space in the UDP. So in a sense, I don't know why we're arguing this because a fenced-off formal area for regular sport, which is what is exactly going to happen there, that, that, it's not part of the local plan and it's not part of the UDP. So we should not be debating this. More of a comment than a question, but I would like the officer to respond to that.
Chris?
Uh, Chair, the, the policies don't prevent, uh, facilities such as this. If this were in a park, for example, uh, which is also open space, um, policies don't prevent, our open space policies don't prevent something like this from being supported. Uh, in fact, um, there are arms of that policy that the facility would be seen to, um, be supportive of, i.e. encouraging better use, uh, more regular use, getting more out of, um, the open space. Um, so that, that's the reason we are considering it and we don't feel that there is conflict.
If I could res- thank you. Uh, if I could respond just to that, it's not better use. There's no, where's your evidence for that?
Okay, maybe better use wasn't the right phrase. Uh, but makes it more usable in terms of, uh, for more activities for more of the year.
Thank you, Chris.
Gary?
Uh, Chair, I, I really can't believe where we are today. It's, uh, I've urged you, Chris, what you said earlier to, uh, counter down his, uh, question to you. Uh, but I'm, I'm staggered really, you know, that we've got a school, uh, or we've got anybody coming in, what's got a, you know, got close neighbours. And we've, we've always said, right, since we set up the likes, local area committees, that we're listening, we're a listening council. But yet something as big as this, what's caused a lot of upset in the community from, from, from speakers, what's coming here today. And there are loads of other people, like, like one of the questions, uh, one of, uh, one of the people came around and said, there's a lot of people, what's frightened to say anything? And that's a lot of, there's a lot of people out there, what's, what does that mean by application? So what, when an application comes into the council, do you, as, as, as a planning board, planning authority, uh, say to the applicants, um, have you put a consultation out? Especially something like this, I would have thought that you would put a consultation out and actually ask the local area committee manager, uh, to go into the school, uh, and have a chat and, and see how that could happen. You know, do we do that at, at any point? Or is it just you get an application in front and you, you look at it to see if it fits into the criteria we've got? Thanks.
Chair, we, we, we deal with a lot of applications at, or a lot of inquiries, development proposals at pre-application stage. Um, where, yes, when, when we feel that there is an opportunity for public engagement, we will suggest that to them, but we, we can't insist upon it. We have no power to insist upon it. And that kind of answers the second bit of the question. So when, uh, um, the formal application lands with us, we can't, uh, prevent its progress if, if the, if a, if a pre-application consultation exercise by the applicant hasn't occurred, um, neither can we insist on it, Chair.
So just in that way, you said, you know, it does happen. Uh, in this case, uh, did they ask?
I don't believe there was pre-application engagement at all, Chair. I'm just going to check, uh, the report. But which, you know, it's, again, it's not a requirement. Um, it's encouraged, but it is not a requirement. Yeah, there was no, uh, no, no, uh, pre-application inquiry in this case. Oh, apologies, apologies. Uh, apologies, there was. Uh, apologies for that. I've said that right at the beginning as well, that there was no pre-application, uh, inquiry. There, there was a pre-application inquiry made by the school on behalf of, on behalf of the current proposal. So on page one eighty seven. There is reference to that there. And, and a, and a very basic summary of, of what the advice was, which was that there was no objection in principle to it, subject to a number of considerations around things like lighting, drainage, visual impact and what have you. Um, so I can't answer the question, Chair, as to whether they were encouraged to do that or not. But again, we can't, we can't force them to do that through the process, any applicant.
All right, all right. Um, I think it's really unfortunate we've got to this position, actually. Um, it's turning into a very adversarial sort of situation and Chris can only deal with the planning issues. I think that the school should have done far more consultation with the community and with all the parents, basically. Um, I was in two minds about this application, partly for the reasons that Mark touched upon about the importance of physical activity to the health and well, wellbeing of future generations. And the fact that they can't play organised sport for much of the year is clearly a problem. However, I've listened to the people who've spoken opposing it and I can actually see their point of view as well. So I think it's very unfortunate we've got to this position. Shouldn't have got here. Chris can only deal with the planning issues that are presented to him from the applicant. I think the applicant should have done much better work. A primary school, particularly Echolsaw, Echolsaw Primary School should be at heart of the community and it should have treated the community much more seriously and done a lot more consultation. And perhaps we could have got to a much better place. Perhaps they could have looked at drainage, how to improve it for a fraction of the cost. Perhaps they could have looked at other solutions. I will never know now, will I? Because I've got this here, which, um, I'm not happy with. Thank you.
I take it we've now moved on to comments without reasking for comments? So bring comments. So if other people want to come here, I've got Toby now. Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think it's very, it's very disappointing that, as it says, as, as has been said, that we've got to this point. I, I would have hoped that the school would have done a more permeable type of playing surface rather than picking, uh, uh, something of this, this nature where, um, it would have not in, it encroached too much on biodiversity with, with a playing surface that's permeable, uh, rather than, than what they've got here. And I just think that, uh, I'm, I, it's a comment and I'm, I'm inclined to, uh, to refuse, uh, to reject the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Um, Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, a couple of questions, stroke, comments. Um, firstly, is lack of consultation a planning reason to refuse an application?
No, no, Chair, it's, oh, sorry, sorry. Uh, no, Chair, the, the, there are statutory requirements for publicity, there are requirements upon the local authority, um, that they must undertake, that we must undertake, uh, before determining an application. They've been complied with. Uh, on top of that, we have our own, um, statement of community involvement and code of practice publicity, which we followed. That's, that's what we have to do, if you like, and that's what we've done. There is no requirement, um, for the, um, for the applicant to undertake pre-application, um, consultation.
Thank you. I mean, firstly, what I would say is that I think it was very valuable to have a site visit. It really did, um, give, give, as I'm sure the people who are on it saw. Um, it's quite a big site. The proposed mugger will take some, will take a significant proportion of the area, but there will still be an awful lot of grass left. And we walked, as we walked up to the top, we actually asked that question, reflected on it, uh, with other members, that there, there's still a lot of grass there. And as far as I could see, it's all pretty usable. I respect the comments from the people behind me, but it didn't strike me as being somewhere where you really wouldn't want children to be playing. In fact, there were significant numbers of children playing just generally in that area. Um, as far as I can see, the reason why the school want to do this is because they have an issue with, uh, that piece of green space that in, in the winter it becomes almost unusable to the extent that, um, assemblies, if according to the document, assemblies having been taking place in class because their sports hall is being used, um, not for assemblies but for sporting activity. So they're looking to create something that can be usable for much longer, longer periods of the year. Ironically, the bulk of the school year is during the winter period, uh, when the weather isn't great. So this will help, um, provide a capacity for all times of exercise. I don't necessarily think the school is designing it to be, for formal activity. It seems to be just an area that can be used throughout the year for people, for the young children to do what they do. Um, my only concern is the drainage. Because once it's in, and if it's not right, then, and it has a drainage impact, and we know there is a drainage impact already just on the grass when it's there, although there wasn't much grass in the area anyway, it was all very much dried mud. Um, it's going to create problems for those residents. I have, again, a lot of sympathy for that because you don't, you don't want, uh, surface water coming into your garden, so into your house potentially. So I don't know what else we can do about the drainage, whether we defer for a, a further drainage report, if, if that would be any benefit. I mean, it asks in the, uh, in the conditions that a, an assessment of the drainage needs to be done and approved by the council before, uh, work can commence. Whether that could be done before the application is, is signed off or otherwise?
Ricky?
Chair, thank you. Um, just to roll back a little bit there. Um, the, the member asked originally about reasons for refusal and what they can be. I just wanted to, um, remind members that reasons for refusal have to be planning reasons. So so far on the floor, I've heard, um, reference to, um, sympathising to objectors' points of view. And also now we've also had a comment about permeable surfaces and, and now again about drainage. Uh, obviously in terms of drainage, your planning officer's already advised you that there has been an assessment and it's been dealt with by condition. And so obviously the professional advice you've got there is that it's something that has been dealt with. What we have done previously where members do have queries about drainage and want to understand further is that, um, members have requested a deferral and we've actually invited a member of the, um, lead local flood authority, which is obviously, um, obviously an employee of the council to come along and to answer questions that members may have if they're not currently satisfied with the drainage information, uh, that the planning officers provide and is already contained in the report and, as I say, dealt with by condition. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very useful. I mean, I would be quite happy to suggest that we do that, um, to get it. Because that's the one thing I see personally is it will have a significant impact on the residents, as if the drainage goes wrong.
So are you proposing that we defer and ask for a member and a flooding department to come and speak to us?
Yes.
Do I have a second, though? Cliff?
I think Marianne was just trying to connect up to second, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's along the lines of what I was saying before in that it's a major flood, flood risk. Uh, clearly water's going to go downhill and affect properties. Covering the ground can't be a solution. We need professional advice from an independent expert. This needs to be provided. And I think this is too much of an admission to actually be able to judge the application on its planning merits and a condition is not sufficient. So I would second that motion to defer.
I'm not taking any more comments. We're going to vote now on Brian's, um, right.
or Richard's proposal, that we defer and we ask for it to come back, and a member from the floods, I forgot the correct name, but from that department to come and speak to us. Can I have a hand, shall please?
Can we have an independent expert?
Only if the school will pay for it. We can't pay for them, we have our own people. So...
I forgot to ask the question. A similar thing to this happened in, I believe it was near Stockbridge, where there was a deferral. You may remember this, Vicky. And I think it was an independent drainage advice came back, or maybe it was a council one.
My recollection was that it was an employee of the council that came and spoke. Obviously, as the local planning authority, it's totally reasonable that we would invite an employee of ours. My understanding is that the applicant has already put forward some drainage information, and it's the employee of the council in that role that assesses the application information. So, you know, the applicant has already got an independent person to provide the information, then the council, in that capacity, then assesses that information.
So, we're now going on. I didn't see a full show of hands, so could I have a show of hands, please, on the deferral? And ask for someone from... That's... Thank you. So, it's now deferred? And we ask for someone from...
Sorry, Chair, that's now been deferred, thank you.
I suggest we take a ten minute rate? Back for ten two, please. 176, FPL, Spartan Works, 534, Atwood Road, Sheffield. Page 101 of the agenda. Over to you, Andrew. No, sorry. Read the wrong one. I read the wrong one, yeah, it's planning application, yes. I'll get you it, Brian, because I've been running out of order. Planning application 23/03815, O U T, land at the junction of Herry Road, Herry Road South and Peniston Road North, Sheffield, S61QE, page 35 of the agenda. Over to you, Andrew.
Thank you very much, Chair. This is a site that's been the subject of recent applications for similar proposals made back in 2019, and more recently in 2021. It relates to a large area of vacant land that is located near Hillsborough in north-west Sheffield. The site is approximately triangular in shape and is considerable size, being just over five hectares in site area. It is surrounded by highly trafficked classified roads on all sides, including the A61 Peniston Road to the west, Herry's Road to the east, and Herry's Road south on the southern boundary. The site consists of previously developed land, in the most part, and is occupied by several piles of demolition rubble, which date back to the removal of some of the commercial unit buildings which previously occupied the site. Neighbouring uses are commercial and industrial to the north, east and south, along Herry's Road, Herry's Road south, Rosen Spring Road and Peniston Road. Hillsborough Football Stadium is a very significant landmark opposite the site to the south-west. In addition, an area of terraced housing is located opposite the site to the west on the other side of Peniston Road and its associated side streets. Next up is a collection of recent site photos taken from within the site. The site's actually enclosed by temporary hoardings and security fencing at the present time, making it difficult to see within it. However, when stood within the site and within the hoardings, these photos show the site in its present state. Here, its brownfield nature is very apparent. As can be seen, the terrain is currently made up of the demolition rubble piles and broken up hard surface in. Here's a photo looking northbound, the A61 Peniston Road on the left-hand side beyond the hoardings. The northern part of the site that is protected by the Woodland Tree Preservation Order and would be affected by the proposals is visible in the top part of the photo. Similar characteristics are on display on this particular photo, which looks across the main body of the site, looking north-west towards the A61 Peniston Road and the 021 Herry's Road on the right-hand side. The existing terraced houses on the opposite western side of Peniston Road can be seen towards the top of the photo, with the TPO woodland on the right-hand side. This is the view across the site looking west, where the proximity of the site to Hillsborough Football Stadium can be appreciated. Aside from that, the photo again shows the derelict nature of the land. This is the third time in recent history that a planning application has been considered on the site. The previous applications made back in 2019 and 2021 were both approved by the council. The 2021 approval in particular was very similar in nature to the latest proposals, and is still extant. On this occasion, the application is part full and part outline format, which is known as a hybrid planning application. The full part of the application relates to the food store proposal in the northern part of the site, its associated customer car park and the new internal road system. The southern part of the application is in outline form, with all matters reserved apart from means of access. However, the indicative site layout and parameters plan includes seven new buildings within that part of the development that would be available for a range of commercial uses. This shows the overall site layout plan and master plan, which shows how the future development would relate to its surroundings. This is a slide showing the full part of the application in greater detail. It shows the proposed layout for Aldi Food Store that would be located in the northern part of the site. The food store building would have a space of just short of 2,000 square metres, and would be set behind a car park containing 153 customer parking spaces. The rear of the building would back onto the area of existing trees in the northern area of the site that is subject to the Woodland Tree Preservation Order. Those would be retained as part of the proposals and would provide screening. This part of the proposal also includes the new internal road system proposed to serve the development. Entrances and exits are proposed on all three sides, including Herry's Road on the east side, Peniston Road on the west side, and Herry's Road on the south side. At the centre of those new roads would be a new roundabout within the site. This is the southern part of the site, which is in outline format, with all matters reserved apart from means of access. The indicative site layout and parameters plans include seven new buildings within that part of the development that would be a mixture of sizes and commercial uses. Unit one would be a small retail unit just over 100 square metres. Units two and five would both be drive-through restaurants, that would be approximately 200 square metres in size. Unit three would be a drive-through coffee shop, that would be slightly smaller to the drive-through restaurants. The remaining three buildings, units four, six and seven, are intended to be made available for storage and distribution, or as builders' merchants with a trade counter. Those would be larger buildings that would be rated between 500 square metres and 3,000 square metres in floor space. The parameters scheduled states that most of the buildings would be five to six metres in height, with unit four being the tallest at nine to 10 metres. But the detailed design for this part of the proposal would need to be established through a future reserve matters application. Elevations wise, only the Aldi building is for full planning permission at this stage, just to reaffirm. It would consist of a single-storey building that would be fairly typical for this type of retail food store. However, amended plans were insisted upon during the time that the application was under consideration to enhance the appearance and create a greater level of interest to the elevations that would be visible to the public. Facing materials would be a mixture of buff brickwork and light and dark grey cladding and glazing. The next slide gives an idea of what the building would look like in three dimensions, as seen from the Peniston Road site frontage, with the cause of the facing materials applied. This slide shows the intended movement strategy for the full part of the application related to the Aldi. The dashed blue lines show the routes that vehicles would travel to and from the development. The vertical lines show the routes into the site for pedestrians and cycles. This slide is showing the proposed entrance and exit onto the Peniston Road side of the development, which would be left-turning and left-turnout only. This would include a new slip entrance from the main A61 and a curved exit route back onto it. Drivers would be required to stop and give way to traffic already on the A61, which would retain priority. This junction design has been the subject of an internal highways assessment, and one from Active Travel England, with no grants for concern based upon the preliminary design. But there will be something else to say about that when I summarise the supplementary. Alongside that junction detail I've just mentioned, another important detail that's carried across from the previous permissions involves the applicant dedicating land on the site frontage on Peniston Road to enable the existing footway and cycleway to enhance to a five-and-a-half metre wide specification. The majority of the approximate 130 objections from members of the public, Cycle Sheffield, the Upper Don Trail Trust and several elected members have been in relation to the Peniston Road access and cycleway. Those concerns were taken on board, and highways officers have spent considerable time discussing the concerns with Active Travel England and the South Yorkshire May Overall Combined Authority, who have both been involved as a consultant on the application. That input has informed amended plans to design the proposed entrance and exit onto Peniston Road in order for it to comply with the Department for Transport's Local Transport No 120, which relates to cycle infrastructure design. But as far as this application is concerned, the main aim is to secure the strip of the applicant's land on the Peniston Road site frontage in order for it to be rededicated as highway, as per the previous permission. Initially, it was proposed that that would be secured via conditions, as per the previous permissions. However, following legal services alerting officers to a recent Supreme Court case, this is now proposed to be secured via a Section 106 agreement, as is explained in the supplementary committee report, which again, I'll come on to talk a bit more in a bit more detail a bit later on. Just going to skip over these next two slides for the time being, because they're just from the previous permission to show similarities, but what I want to show next really is some photos which show the existing site frontage along Peniston Road in its current state. As can be seen, the existing frontage is in untidy condition. A few markings to make it clear that it's a combined cycle and footway, so it's a fairly narrow in width, with the road signs and lighting columns providing a level of obstruction. It's a similar story heading southbound, with this being the opposing view in that direction. The committee report explains that 129 objections received from members of the public. The report also explains that elected member objections made by councillors Grove Court, Milson, Kubo, Mallison, Mr Chin Chin was mistakenly referred to as a current councillor, which is a correction in the supplementary. Most of those concerns are about the points that we've already heard about. Other concerns raised about traffic generation onto already highly trafficked and congested roads, especially on Sheffield Wednesday, match days, and the traffic and parking conflicts. Other concerns have been expressed about the question of the need for a further retail food store and drive-through restaurants in the area. And concerns have been expressed about the impacts on trees, air quality, climate change. The lengthy committee report explains the assessment that the proposals carried out by officers. It explains that the council has previously granted permission on this site on two recent occasions previously for similar proposals. The 2021 permission remains extant, is very similar. And so that's a highly significant material consideration to take into account. The main difference on this occasion is that the application has been changed to be part full and part outline. And that's where they allow outline plots to be marketed and come forward as separate reserve matters applications in the future. But that doesn't alter many of the main assessment findings established previously in relation to the principal development, its design and layout, and the highways' considerations. The report explains the reasons that the proposals are considered acceptable in policy terms in regards to the principles previously established, the relevant U D P and national policies. The proposal is considered acceptable in design terms and would utilise sustainable construction methods. In addition, the development would deliver far in excess of 10% biodiversity to net gain, and would protect the existing area of TPO woodland. In terms of other highways' considerations, many of the details are covered across from previously in relation to the proposed entrance and exit points from all three sides of the site, the design of the internal road and parking. In addition, the proposals are not considered to be materially different in trip generation and network capacity terms, especially as the amount of floor space from the buildings is reduced by approximately 20% compared with last time around. The road junction between the A61 Peniston Road and Herry's Road is configured with signals for use by vehicles. It does also include tactile crossings and a central refuge island for use by pedestrians and cycles. The concerns received those representations about the absence of push-button crossings are acknowledged. However, due to the combination of the low pedestrian and cycle movements predicted to be generated by the development, and the applicant proposing to contribute land belonging to them currently to become adopted highway, and the significant cost of remodelling and working of that junction, it is felt that that request would be disproportionate. Alongside that, it is the case that Active Travel England, as a national body, are currently funding feasibility work about favourable upgrades along the A61 cycle route, which is intended to lead to the installation of push-button pedestrian crossings at the Herry's Road south and Rutland Road junctions along the Peniston Road route. During those interim, those opt-in to use signalised push-button crossings can do so. Crossing over to the east side of Peniston Road, where the Sheffield Wednesday ground is, they can head down towards Parkside Road and use push buttons again to cross back over the road. The report explains the assessment carried out in relation to other material considerations, including drainage and flood risk, air quality, sustainable construction. Proposals are judged acceptable in relation to each, subject to the conditions recommended. Overall, the site is in a derelict condition at the present time, and is a significant blight upon this highly prominent part of north-west Sheffield. Proposals are judged acceptable for the reasons explained in the report, and are recommended for approval accordingly. But if I may, I'd just like to just talk about a few things on the supplementary report before I hand over. So one of the things that I've mentioned is that it's been recognised that, rather than the recommendation being grant subject to conditions, the recommendation type needs to be changed to grant subject to the completion of a Section 106 agreement. And that's in order to secure the highway dedication on the Peniston Road site frontage. So that would also necessitate a condition, so the wording of condition 18, which is stated. We've been alerted to representation that's been submitted to at least one member from Aldi, which actually just reiterates a lot of the comments which are in the officer report. It just also promotes some of the other benefits associated with their development. And then the final thing to mention is that within the body of the report, it mentions that the Peniston Road site access had been... it mentions that the Peniston Road site access had been the subject of a stage one road safety audit. That was understood to be true at the time that it was written, but since we received clarification on that point from highways. However, they have clarified that highways that the internal people within the council have assessed the design and Active Travel England, it is acceptable at the preliminary design stage. But as happens with standard highways, section two seventy-eight agreements, it would be subject to further detailed design. And that would go through, I think it's up to four different stages of road safety audit before it could become confirmed. So at this point, I would conclude my presentation and hand back over. Thank you.
Andrew. We have three speakers on this application. We have two against and one for. So I'll invite the first speaker, which is Simon Ogden. We have five minutes, Simon.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Simon Ogden, the Chair of the Upper Don Trail Trust, a qualified town planner of thirty-six years' experience and one of the hundred and twenty-nine objectors to this proposal, all of which I think were primarily concerned about the impact of the proposed development on active travel and road safety. So what we're asking for as objectors is, first of all, the construction of a good quality, continuous segregated cycle footway along the whole Peniston Road site frontage of the development from Herry's Road North to Herry's Road South, all of which is within the applicant's ownership and a clear and unambiguous condition to that effect, because the condition that is there, I just do not understand. It has phrases like 'where possible' and 'broadly in line with', and it doesn't seem to be clear at all. I hope I'm wrong about that. Secondly, a contribution to the cost of a new safe controlled crossing at Herry's Road South junction and provision of land required through the section one oh six agreement that's been mentioned. Thirdly, the main access for delivery vehicles currently located on Peniston Road could be relocated to Herry's Road North, part of the Outer Ring Road, in a much less used walking and cycling route. The more modest customer entrance on this Herry's Road could be moved to Peniston. This switch would allow the conjunction with Peniston Road to be scaled back by around two thirds of its width and allow a much more direct crossing with clearer cycle pedestrian priority and would divert heavy vehicles away from that crossing of the main strategic travel route. By the way, there's no evidence in the officer report that this neutral option, which was proposed by objectors, has even been put to the developer. Again, I hope I'm wrong. Why are we asking you all this? Peniston Road is a key part of the national cycle network, route six two seven, and also forms a gateway to the Upper Don Trail, which is a twenty-three kilometre multi-use trail linking Sheffield to Ute Bridge, Stockbridge and the Peak District, two thirds of which is already in place. It's heavily used, but the Peniston Road section is notoriously substandard and dangerous with over thirty uncontrolled vehicle junctions and crossings, many random obstacles and are constantly varying width, surface and quality. Here, we have a major development site and a multinational business with deep pockets who at a modest cost could transform this situation over a three hundred and sixty metre whole block frontage. Their large new access cuts across the active travel route with the new and excessively wide junction with huge corner radii for H G Vs, which will encourage vehicles to turn in and out at speed. Yet it does incorporate, yes, it does incorporate a short section of new segregated cycleway for about twenty metres on either side, but it doesn't continue along the rest of the three hundred and sixty metre long frontage. Furthermore, there is no improvement whatsoever on the pedestrian or cycle safety at the busy and notoriously dangerous junction with Herry's Road South, right up as at the Wednesday Stadium, which all users on foot, bike or wheelchair approach with fear for their lives. Traffic of all modes at this junction can only get busier as a result of this development. The request also gets barely mentioned in the officer's report, by the way. Instead, it's argued in the report that the bar was set by a previous approval for a development first granted in two thousand and nineteen to Jaguar Estates and that asking for anything more than this limited improvement offered at the time can't be sustained. Actually, many objectors said at that time the Jaguar scheme was also a poor effort and it's not clear that the current proposal actually even offers as much as the Jaguar proposal did. But surely ambitions for the promotion of active travel have massively increased at national, regional and city level in the five years since two thousand and nineteen. I quote, 'Isolated stretches of good provision are of little value', not our words but those of Active Travel England in their initial comments on this application. Their national policy statement is called gear change. I quote, 'To deliver this ambitious vision, active travel will need to be embedded in wider policymaking and local authorities will be encouraged and empowered to take bold decisions.' You have one here to take. Elsewhere on the Upper Don Trail, private developers have all accepted conditions requiring them to construct good quality sections of the route from scratch at Exchange Riverside, Neeks End, Deep Car and Ute Bridge Valley, in that case including funding a new bridge over the dome. So why are we being so timid here and setting a very poor precedent for the future? Ironically, only a few weeks ago, Aldi's agents actually distributed a flyer to all homes in the area claiming that Aldi promotes cycling and also issued a media statement to that effect, which appeared in the Star. Are they really going to go to appeal over a condition requiring them to actually step up to the claim that they've made in public? Yes, there is a feasibility to be now underway, funded by Active Travel England.
Much your time up, thank you, Simon.
It's in the future. We don't know if that funding is going to be available. Therefore, we ask you to defer the decision today and instruct officers to push harder for a meaningful contribution to active travel and road safety from this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Our next speaker is Simon Keller, please. You have five minutes, Simon.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try to be brief as Simon Ogden has made most of the points that I would make in any case. I'm Simon Keller. I'm the Chair of the Friends of the Trans-Penland Trail, so as being a Sheffield resident. The T P T, as it is known, for those who don't know, is a coast-to-coast and north-to-south network of routes across the north of England. It brings in a great deal of tourist revenue. It's estimated that it can bring in up to a million pounds a year to Sheffield, according to the visitor surveys that have been conducted by the T P T office in Barnsley. And as part of the National Cycle Network and our local networks, it provides sustainable low carbon travel for leisure and utility. In this area, our original route went via Grenor Side, but when Peniston Road came up, that was obviously our preferred route and we've adopted it as part of the trail. It's obviously a good quality flat route to get both tourists and locals into the city centre so they can spend some money. We expect a higher standard of our route, but we do find that it is constantly under threat of being whittled away by developments like this one. Now, whereas we welcome the improvements that have been made to this application, we feel it could still be better. And I think Simon has highlighted those areas where it's deficient. There are existing agreed standards and we feel these should be adhered to. In particular, I'd like to draw your attention to the myth of the slip road, where it is felt that developments like this have to have a slip road so that cars can come off the main carriageway at speed and decelerate there because if they don't, it is inevitable that the car behind them will run into them. There's no evidence for this and drivers are actually expected to be paying attention when they're driving. So slip roads are not always really necessary. We believe that cyclists and walkers should get the same priority at junctions as drivers. When you're cycling along a major route, you should get the same priority as the drivers on that route. You shouldn't have to stop and start constantly at junctions. Simon has highlighted the alternative entrance that's possible for H G Vs. We certainly support that. And in general, I feel that the conditions that have been put on the application are a little too weak. The use of terms like 'where possible' provides a get-out clause for the developers and gives walking and cycling a lower priority than driving. And those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simon. Our next speaker is for the application and that is Chris Thompson, please. Sorry, Mark Stringer.
Good afternoon, Chair, councillors. My name is Mark Stringer, the Real Estate Director for Aldi Stores Limited. I'm delighted to be able to speak to you today in regard to our want to bring an Aldi store to Peniston Road, Sheffield. The comprehensive report before you addresses the concerns and recommends approval. I don't intend to duplicate officers' positive comments, but there are some matters which merit further emphasis. The application site's potential for redevelopment is clear. It occupies a prominent location on a key route into the city and whilst previously developed, it now lies vacant and offers a poor impression to the area. As you will be aware, the land's redevelopment is a longstanding priority for the council with both the adopted and emerging local plan allocating it for employment generating purposes. The site also has a long planning history with various commercial schemes having been approved over the past decades, but disappointingly none being delivered. The most recent, from two thousand and twenty-one, includes many of the same uses presented as part of the current scheme, including a discount food store, builders merchants, drive-through restaurants and trade counters. This approved scheme also uses equivalent access arrangements from cars from Peniston Road, Herry's Road and Herry's Road South. Aldi were actually lined up to operate the food store, which was granted permission in two thousand and twenty-one, but like so many schemes before it on this land, viability constraints meant that sadly the developer involved could not afford to build it. Aldi therefore acquired the site from the developer earlier this year with the sole intention of finally seeing the land redeveloped. It remains possible for us to build out the two thousand and twenty-one scheme and the officer report recognises the significance of this consideration to the current application. However, our strong preferences to move forward with the improved scheme set out as part of the planning application before you because crucially from a viability perspective, it has been tailored to meet the latest market demands. This is emphasised by the fact that we have a developer in place to deliver the future phases once Aldi has constructed the food store and necessary site infrastructure. I hope this therefore highlights that Aldi want to help the council finally bring this challenging site forward, creating approximately a hundred and seventy jobs as part of a multi-million pound investment. It is important to note that we want to do this as quickly as possible, which is why the scheme before you today is largely reflective of the one this committee approved but three years ago and why we have worked collaboratively with your officers as part of a planning performance agreement to get to a position where the scheme is recommended for approval. Despite what you may have heard from objectors to the scheme, Aldi are in fact committing to providing more off-site highway and cycling improvements than the two thousand and twenty-one proposals. As part of these betterment works, we have agreed to gift the council at zero cost all land required across the site boundaries to deliver the walking and cycling improvements that are being targeted by the A sixty-one Active Travel Corridor Project. This includes an extensive parcel of land along the full extent of the site frontage, which facilitates the council's objective to achieve the target width of five point five metres for shared cycle and footway. I appreciate that our original application submission could have shown the safeguarded land more explicitly and this led to concerns locally that Active Travel Corridor Project might be jeopardised by our proposals. This was not our intention and I apologise for any confusion caused. However, we have now amended all plans to address this and make clear that the proposals in absolute clarity provide a betterment. A section one oh six legal agreement has been tied to the granting of the planning permission and this will ensure that the land transfer takes place, giving the council full security on this matter. I also acknowledge the original junction solution presented as part of the scheme did not afford enough priority to pedestrians and cyclists, even though it actually reflected the arrangement approved as part of the two thousand and twenty-one scheme. Active Travel England objected on the basis that guidance had changed in the intervening period. In response to this, we engaged with the council's highways team during the determination process to find a solution which was both to their and Active Travel England satisfaction. I'm pleased to confirm that the revised junction detail now has the full support of both your highways team and that of Active Travel England, who have removed their objection, further confirming that it will provide adequate priority for pedestrians and cyclists. I'm mindful of time and so will draw my comments together. We acknowledge the concerns raised by some local residents to the proposals in relation to cycle access. However, Aldi have done everything requested of us by your highways officers and Active Travel England to address these concerns and neither consultees now objects. In fact, there are no objections from any of the council's statutory technical consultees, subject to mitigation that we will of course be happy to provide. The Aldi team have worked collaboratively with your officers over the past twelve months to develop a scheme which is deliverable and enhances the one you approved in two thousand and twenty-one. I'm delighted to say that should planning permission be granted today, approximately a hundred and seventy local jobs for local people would be created as part of this multi-million pound investment. And it is in light of these benefits and your officers' conclusions that we ask members follow the officer's recommendation to approve this application, finally enabling the redevelopment of the long vacant site and bringing significant investment to the Sheffield community.
You'll find yourself now, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Andrew, will you like to come back on?
Yeah, just on a few things. So yeah, I think we have been listening as far as the representations have been concerned. So the junction design, what's indicated now on the screen, it's an amended version. This isn't how the proposals started out because the first version also attracted concerns from Active Travel England, who were a statutory consultant with the site being over five hectares and also a simca as well as the Combined Mayoral Authority. So it's evolved. So I know that the representations that we've received, they've been sent through to highways and then highways that's been looked at internally through the various teams and that resulted in just going back to the applicants asking for amended plans. And so what we see now is an amended and improved design, which at a preliminary stage is now acceptable to those consultees where it wasn't at the start. And I do think we should acknowledge that it is going to be a significant benefit in terms of the land that we will be able to secure from the applicant on the site frontage because very clearly, you know, what you can see on the screen isn't anything like what it looks like at the moment. So I'll just flip back to these two photographs. So yeah, it's in a pretty sorry state is this cycle route on the site frontage at the present time. What I'll say as well is that some of the accesses that come in from that side from Peniston Road, they're historical accesses. You can even still see the markings on the ground, the giveaway markings in certain locations. So actually, a lot of this has come in full circle in terms of reinstating access points that existed when the site had buildings on it previously. And another benefit I wanted to flag up as well is that the retail parts of the development will be subject to community infrastructure levy. And so yes, that they'll bring in revenue from that, which obviously can be invested by the council on infrastructure within the city.
Thank you, Andrew. Members' questions. And can you keep the questions to questions and not comments, please? Otherwise we'll be here till nine o'clock tonight. Laura.
The applicant talked about local jobs for local people. Is there any, is there anything in the report that says how that will be achieved? How that will be ensured?
Yeah, we've got condition seven. So that requires an inclusive employment and development plan to be submitted and approved by the local planning authority. And so they've got to engage the applicant with talent Sheffield as part of putting that together.
Could I just make a recommendation that you actually work with the local community organisations such as Step at Stockbridge, Saw at Southie and Olerton and Zest at Upper Thorpe to ensure it gets to not just Talent Sheffield, but those furthest away from the workplace? The people who are harder to engage.
Yeah, so just comfort there. So yeah, I understand that the relevant people in the council that will engage as a consultant on the discharge of that condition will have those contact details and that as a result that should be possible to meet that request. and that as a result that should be possible to meet that request.
Mark?
I will be brief, but this is very important to us out in Stockbridge. I'm a councillor for out there. We've had a lot of development out in Stockbridge. There is an immense pressure growing on Manchester Road to get into Sheffield. Many, there isn't the employment out there, most of the people are commuting in here. We desperately want to encourage a cycling route at speed from Stockbridge into the town. This trail is that route. But we're not wanting some sort of stop-start, stop-start thing that a kid on a trike can go 100 yards on. It's got to be something that people can belt along at speed. So it can't be constantly interrupted by these developments, by junctions and stuff. It must be prioritised. The trail must be prioritised over the development. It's essential to us to diversify our connectivity from Stockbridge. So I would just like councillors to bear that in mind when they're voting. Thank you.
Cliff?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, can you clarify please exactly how much cycle lane we are actually getting in this proposal? Does it run the whole length of the site or not?
It will run the entire length of the site frontage on Peniston Road, albeit there'll be the junction that comes in where there'll be a need to cross at that point. I mean, just going back to the previous councillor comment as well. I think I might also attempt to bring in Mark from highways too, but what I was just going to say, I don't think it's a case of one or the other. There is the active travel involvement still as well. They're funding this feasibility work for upgrades along the Peniston Road cycle routes. And within that brief, they're looking at the possibility of installing the push-button signalised crossings at both Harrys Road South junction and further along the route at Rutland Road. So yeah, I don't know if you've got anything else that you want to come in on, Mark?
Yep Chair. I think there might be a slight bit of confusion. In the conditions, number seven refers to the highway works. And the third bullet point refers to Peniston Road and providing a 5.5 metre width right the way along the frontage there prior to the store opening. So it isn't just 20 metres either side of the site access, it's the whole length of the A61 on Peniston Road. There could be pinch points, as Simon mentioned. There's a brook which has culverted and I think there's a structural limitation there. So there could be a pinch point there. And the feasibility work that Active Travel England have funded, I mean, there's the church near the Owl and Dog Track. That, I'm sure that will cause a pinch point as well. This feasibility work that has been funded and is currently being undertaken is due to be completed by the end of this month, year, sorry. So sometime around Christmas time, I assume. I'm not directly involved in the commission, but I assume that that would come back to the council, come back to highways committee or something to have a look at and ask questions about. And it will, it will be providing, or the feasibility, the brief of the feasibility is to explore the provision of push-button, as we mentioned, crossing facilities at Rutland Road and also at Harrys Road South. And there's been a lot of discussion about the previous consents. When the other two schemes were approved, there was a long lease on the Charlie Brown site. And in order to provide push-button facilities at Harrys Road South, the advice I was receiving from our highways design team and our transport planners was that when you put in a pedestrian phase or a call for cyclists and pedestrians to stop traffic in all directions so they can cross the road, there would have to be quite a significant redesign of that junction to provide extra lanes to maintain the capacity, because it's a material route and it's also ambulances needing to get them down Harrys Road. So we couldn't just, the advice I was given, we couldn't just superimpose push-button controls on that junction because the consequences in terms of queues and delays wouldn't have been acceptable. We would have needed the Charlie Browns land to reconfigure the junction in a way that makes it work for everybody, cyclists, pedestrians, and doesn't cause congestion in all directions. So in terms of the conditions, that condition seven does refer to 5.5 metres being provided along the whole of the site frontage, with the lamp columns moved back and we saw in the image there, the lamp columns were quite, and resurfaced, yeah. And on page 40, condition 18 is the one that, where there was some talk about a section 106 and a land transfer. Now that, that doesn't relate to the A61 frontage. That relates to when the feasibility work is undertaken and it will undoubtedly require some land take on that corner to get something to work for pedestrians and cyclists. That land take would be offered at no cost to the council. So that, that condition 18 refers more to Harrys Road South and Harrys Road so that we can construct what we want to construct. And we all want to encourage walking and cycling. That's not the intention here to not do that. And it was never the case that a deceleration lane was taken away on off-road cycle facility. That was never the case, even under the consented scheme. They were required to provide an improved four metres. And this was before Active Travel England really got off the ground. They were required under the previous consented schemes to provide a shared surface four metres wide, which should have been a widening of what's there currently, and then provide landscaping to the rear of that, which the council could acquire at no cost if a future scheme ever came along. And that's the case now. It looks very much like five and a half metres is the big push now along the, along the whole of that A61 corridor. So the developers are entirely in tune with all of that and the conditions reflect that. Sorry, yeah, plans don't always show everything and that's why we have conditions to do your best.
Simon, can you please not ask questions? We should amend this time. Thank you. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got three questions. The Road Safety Association's safety audit is not available on the planning portal and that's quite an important factor in our decision-making. So where is it? Can I ask that question? Second question is the entrance and exit, I think, looks a mess. I think it's a dangerous mess. But my question is, it's being made too easy to just speed in and out across the cycle paths. So why don't we have a controlled crossing? Like on Hanover Way, there's an example for you. Can we condition that as well? And third question, why is there only one entrance and exit? It seems to be overloading that one area with too many possibly conflicting forms of traffic. So those three questions.
Yeah, sorry Mark, the first two at least. I might send you away if that's okay.
I mean, we did request that the audit be submitted prior to, in conjunction with the application really, so that it was available for people to look at online. Unfortunately, timescales have slipped and even though it was requested, it hasn't quite happened. But what I would say is that there is LT120 guidance as to the type of access crossing that's acceptable. You can have, what we're showing here at the moment, the grade up from that would be a Belisha Beacon type arrangement crossing. And there are criteria for when you go from one type of layout to maybe progressively something that you might feel is more warranted. And it relates to the speed of traffic on the road and the volume of traffic. And there are a couple of tables in the guidance in LTN120, it's section 10.4 and table 10.2. The volume and the speed of traffic is below the trigger that would require Belisha Beacons. This is a standard layout that you can see in the LTN120 guidelines. So in that respect, it's compliant. And Active Travel England have been consulted all the way through this. And they originally gave a directive for the application to be deferred because they weren't confident that enough priority was being given to cyclists and pedestrians. Due through the design process and iteration, they're now comfortable that the layout is compliant with that guidance and they're content for planning permission to be granted. And that's the case of our highways design team, our internal highways design team, whoever are undertaking the feasibility that Active Travel England have commissioned from the city centre right the way out towards Southie Green Road.
I can just ask a supplementary question on that. As a cyclist, it's not speed that's always the problem with a car driver being able to spot you. It's not the speed they're travelling at. So it's not the only factor, is it?
The guideline, the guidance, you can read it yourself, it's all online, relates to the speed of traffic on the road, crossing the conflict, if you like, so motorised traffic. Not the speed of cyclists, but the speed of traffic on the main road and the volume, the number of turns, the number of crossing movements across that site access. And this is below the trigger that would require something as substantial as what you're suggesting. And also that's what a developer would point to, that say, we've got guidelines here. We've achieved, you know, we've hit the guidelines. It would be disproportionate for you to be requesting something that's above those guidelines.
Forgive me, but you can still be hit at 10 miles, 10 miles an hour as opposed to 40 miles an hour?
I don't think that's the argument here. I think it's about adhering to guidelines.
Yeah, Andrew.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that point about there being multiple accesses to the development and not just one. So I know there's been a lot of focus on the Peniston Road entrance and exit today because of all the interest in the cycle routes. But there is actual, there'll be multiple accesses from Harrys Road on that eastern side of the site. One primary one in particular. And there'd also be another access, I think utilising the former Charlie Browns one on Harrys Road on the southern boundary.
Can I ask what traffic will be allowed through those entrances, Alex?
Mark?
Not it often. The service yard entrances are pretty much self-contained courtyards, I believe. So they self-regulate themselves. The other accesses, I mean, the one onto Harrys Road would be for general traffic or turning movements. And the one from Harrys Road South, again, that would be for general traffic to use. I don't think it would be attractive for anything other than those bottom units. I don't think it would be very heavily trafficked. And that would be in terms of movements, it would be left in and left out again with a sausage splitter island type thing so that people can't turn out of the site there and try and join the A61. They would have to go drive away from the A61.
Leah?
Thank you. First of all, from both the presentations, I think, you know, it's quite important to listen to people who are day in, day out in the area and who are going to be affected and also the opportunities for job creation. That's obviously something really important because of this knowing many people needing more jobs. My question actually is, one clarification and two questions. The main entrance, I'm reading that suggestions to be made, main entrance to be via Harrys Road, if I'm understanding this right, I think somebody, you've already answered that, is due to the ambulance in and out and that side of stuff, you've looked into it. For those reasons, it's not possible. And second thing was looking at the plan, the entrance that you showed, having some sort of upgraded crossing that is safe for people because whether it's people walking or even in cars, obviously we've got car users for many reasons why people need to use their cars. But that wide, the way the layout is, something that can be put in place, like I think councillor Brian's mentioned, safety measures, because we've seen it already on other roads, the difficulties and the safety and accidents to be, to reduce those. And one question is around, there's been an objection from licensed catering trailer that has served on Harrys Road South for over 25 years. The reduction of payment will affect businesses which employs several people. So for me also, it's about having new businesses and developments in the area, just making sure the current small businesses, how well are we making sure that they are not hugely impacted? Because we already know from cost of living crisis, from various other stuff and the livelihoods, these small businesses actually are very important to us all as well. So how are we making sure that they are not hugely impacted as well? Thank you.
Coming back on some of that Chair. I think the developer was very keen to have a primary access on the A61 frontage really. And that's what we were presented with. Originally, they would have liked an all-turning manoeuvring junction. They'd turn left in, left out, right out, right, you know. But we felt that it had to be, there was going to be one, it'd have to be a left in and a left out. We, I mean, if there was a reduced scale junction there without the splitter island that was used by maybe less general traffic but more service traffic, it would still be quite wide. I mean, the layout that we've got, yes, there's a splitter island, but you're crossing the junction in two stages and it's just over three and a half metres and then you're on a safe island. If that splitter island isn't there and it's a two-way priority junction within, you know, in and out, a minimum of five and a half to six metres to cross in one go. So it swings and roundabouts to a degree. And the, it is, as I say, there are guidelines as to the appropriateness of different types of junction design and they've been followed. The LTN120 guidelines have been followed here. And the crossing where the pedestrians and cyclists crossed, it would be on a speed, it would be like a platform. So it would be elevated, that there wouldn't be a step down into carriageway and then back up. It would be, the level of the cycle where that you see in red would continue across the site access. So vehicles would go up around, firstly, there'd be giveaway markings in advance of the ramp and then they'll be going up around, across and then back down again. And the deceleration lane has been mentioned a lot. The original scheme had a lot lengthier lane than is shown on the current plans. And it's not really a deceleration lane, so it just gives a bit of, if there is an issue and there needs to be some stacking, then that stacking can occur off of the dual carriageway. It just gives a bit of flexibility on that front. As I say, that even though we haven't got the Stage One Road Safety Audit at the moment, so we haven't seen it, it may have been, it may have happened, but we just haven't seen it yet. There will, as part of the section 278 process, as Andrew's already highlighted, there will have to be a Stage One Road Safety Audit and a Stage Two Road Safety Audit and a Stage Three Road Safety Audit. And everything legally, within the clauses of that agreement, that legal agreement that secures the highway works, the developer is contracted essentially to, if the road safety auditor feels that the design needs to change in some way for a particular road safety issue, then they have to respond to that and undertake a redesign to ensure maximum safety. So that is all part of the process.
Andrew?
Yeah, trying to mull over the best way to answer this one. I think just in planning policy terms, which, you know, not necessarily the most empathetic response. It's just that everything's It's just that everything's framed more to protect existing centres. So with some of the uses that are proposed within this application, then they're classed as main town centre uses. There's quite a big section in the report, actually, what talks about. There's been sequential assessment done to look at whether there's any suitable sites within the nearest centres and the retail impact assessment, which has predicted that there'll be no significant adverse impacts on any of the local centres. Stuff that's like on the pavement as catering trucks, that'll be out of centre. So strictly speaking, in planning policy terms, it wouldn't be protected.
Okay, without a go. Gary, please.
Thanks, Chair. Can I just clarify once? We've had two speakers. A well-respected officer, retired Simon Ogden, said about the HGVs. Did he get a reply with that, for that answer? About a separate road coming in for HGVs because it's going through the same entrance as members at Public Pont.
I turned it off. I think I tried to answer it in the previous response. The developer was very keen to have a primary access off the A61, which is understandable, given the passing traffic and they decided to have a key sort of entrance into the site from there. As I say, if a lesser sized junction had been provided without a splitter island, it's a lot further crossing distance to crossing one go for a cyclist or a pedestrian having to assess traffic coming out of the development site as well as traffic turning in because it's a crossing in one go. This layout gives the option of crossing in two bikes with a safe island in the middle and a crossing distance of in the region of three and a half metres on each occasion as opposed to one crossing of six metres. And in terms of whether the junction is safe or not, as I say, we've, Active Travel England have withdrawn their concerns. They feel that the junction is to standard and offers the right priority cyclists and pedestrians. So this is the route, this is where we are.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Thanks for clarifying that. Is there, is there, is there a time where the lorries can come in early morning or late evening? We aren't disrupting the entrance where people's going to be using that side?
Andrew?
We have got a restriction within the planning conditions to limit, yeah, the times to try and limit, stop that possibility. So it's commercial deliveries to and from the food store, they're limited between 6am to 11pm, Monday to Saturdays and 8am till 10pm on Sundays. I mean, obviously I've got a situation where all of those roads which surround the site, they're highly trafficked, classified roads, distributor roads. So, you know, there is traffic volumes on that which are quite high during most parts of the day and probably even 24 hours, to be fair.
Thanks, Andrew, and thanks for your report and thanks for doing what you did earlier. Bringing this right and everything what you said. Just, and this is going to be a report somewhere around, I haven't seen it. Electrical vehicle charging points and the number of disabled bays. And just by talking on that, Chair, if you don't mind, who monitors the disabled bays? Because I've seen it go to quite a few retailers where it's been abused.
Is that from the point of view of the developer building what's shown on the approved plans? Or is it more from the perspective of enforcing inappropriate and considerate parking within disabled bays, would you say?
Yes, it's inappropriate parking.
Within the disabled bays.
And areas and family areas as well.
Yeah, I think we have got another condition actually because I think if it's taken into account that the location of the site immediately opposite the Sheffield Wednesday Stadium where, you know, it's probably going to be quite, you know, a lot of people might think to try and use it during Sheffield Wednesday, match day. So there is a condition where we've asked them to produce details of how the applicant intends to limit and restrict use of the car park. So, yeah, we expect to receive a detailed scheme which will set out various things which will, since it's in there here today and listening, hopefully they can incorporate a part of that to explain how they will enforce and stop unacceptable use of disabled parking bays.
I'm sure Mark's listening, Andrew. I'm sure he's taking it all in. But just one more, bus stops. You haven't mentioned bus stops, or is it, you wrote, some bus stops as well, we missed that?
Yes, actually, that probably could have been something else that I mentioned as a benefit of the applications, especially in the context of sustainable travel and encouraging people to use their trips to the site over them by private car. So that there is included within the recommendation, it's condition seven, a requirement to enhance two bus stops on Harris Road. So at the moment, I think they're just stops on the lamppost and we're going to require physical shelters to be provided on those. And I think digital information on, yeah, frequencies and the next bus expected, et cetera.
Thanks, Andrew, and thanks, Chair. I've got a comment, Chair, later.
Thank you.
Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, good following on from Gary's point. Restriction on commercial deliveries, it says on condition 30, from the food store. Are there going to be restrictions on the other outlets in terms of deliveries and collections? I'm thinking particularly of the fast food chains. Because there's no point restricting the food store if you're not going to restrict them. And just generally, I think 11 o'clock is, to me, is late, especially on a Saturday. And I think 10 o'clock's late on a Sunday, so could we possibly just pull them in a bit?
Yeah, I think one of the points is that for the southern half of the site and the seven other buildings, they're just in outline form at the moment without definitive end users. So there will be a need for reserve matters, applications to come forward. So they might come forward on a plot by plot basis or in groups. And that'll be another opportunity to actually, you know, understand the precise nature of what occupant might be going in, what use it might be, to actually tailor the conditions, to actually put on such limitations in relation to those particular concerns. I think we have got conditions like, is it number 62? Where we're asking for each part that comes forward on the outline part. They've got to detail their opening hours, delivery and waste collection times. So I think that should cover it in terms of, yeah. We'll get a chance to review it and see whether we think what they're proposing is reasonable or not.
In terms of opening hours, and I apologise if it's in the report, but I couldn't find it. Are there, what are the opening hours for the food store? Because I just can't, I've looked, I can't see it.
I'm sorry, I don't think I know the answer.
If it's going to be a 24-hour store, then that's quite different from a 6 till 10. And I think that's quite important in terms of.
I mean, I think that's in terms of any oldest stores that operate in the area. I don't think we've got knowledge that any do operate on a 24-hour basis. I think obviously we have imposed the conditions on it in relation to the deliveries from the HGVs to the store. But I think the overall context of this particular area where the site is, it is subject to very high activity. There's commercial uses all around it. A lot of it will be historical, a lot of that will not have, will predate planning in terms of any restrictions which will be on as to their opening hours. You've got, they're very high, because I think you're on the site visit yesterday, right? You say, yeah, one of the things that stood out for me was not just what we could see, it's what you could hear, it was so noisy just with the traffic that was passing the site. So, yes, I think we're sort of content with the recommendation as it stands. But, yes, I'm not quite sure about protocol, but if members did want to suggest restrictions to how it would operate, maybe that's something that we could think about as an additional condition.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, to make too big an issue of it, but personally I feel uneasy just giving a blanket opportunity for a store to open with no restrict, well, not even knowing what, it's not talking necessarily about restrictions, but not even knowing what operating hours they're going to have. Because one of the things that did come out from the site visit was that, yes, it's a noisy, busy area, but it's also very close to a residential area on the other side of the road. I'm not necessarily against the application at all, but I think we just should, to me, that's a fundamental piece of information that we should have.
Chair, if I may suggest, bearing in mind the applicants in the room, that perhaps they may want to offer an answer if we're struggling to find the answer. I can just relay that if you want, Chair. I think it was Monday to Saturday, broadly speaking, eight till 10 maximum, and then Sundays standard operating hours, which is 10 till four on a Sunday. I think from an officer's point of view, as we said, we're not particularly concerned around opening hours here because of the sort of the context, and yes, it's residential in the area, but principally it's an employment area, historically it has been, and it's a very busy RT rural route. But thank you to the applicant for answering that. Thank you, Chair.
On that basis, could we make that condition? Just, would you be happy with that?
Yeah, I'll second that, Chair.
Vicky, look about to seek your advice, please.
Thank you, Chair. Members will need to propose a new condition which will be seconded and be voted on. One option would be for information regarding opening hours to be submitted and approved by the local authority. If anybody wanted to reflect, you know, further, obviously I'm conscious that we're in the room and I don't want anybody to feel obliged to do something that they don't actually have time to sort of think about and consider further. As I say, one option is for something to be submitted and approved. Alternatively, obviously it's open to member stores, so I suggest those hours as the condition as well. So both options are available, the proposal seconded and then voted on. Thank you.
Richard?
Personally, I would prefer to go for the proposal, especially as the applicant has indicated they're happy with it as well. So I would propose those hours.
Second, Gary, yeah? Can we do it? Hands vote, please? Yeah, pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think those points have been covered. But there are just a couple of things I wanted to ask. So the gentleman who presented for Aldi, sorry, I can't remember your name, Mark, mentioned that some of the active travel routes would be given over to the council. I just wondered which bits, because in the, well, I just wondered, could you answer that?
Andrew, what's that?
Yeah, maybe in combination with Mark, if that's okay.
Chair, if planning permission is granted, what would happen prior to the store becoming operational? Would be a five and a half metre wide, active travel compliant segregated cycle route across the Peniston Road site frontage. And then the land to be dedicated in the future would be on Harris Road South and Harris Road. And if we need land for the junction improvement that we're doing the feasibility work for Harris Road South for pushbunds for cyclists and pedestrians, it would cover any land required for that as well.
So that will then fall on the council?
It's like, well, Active Travel England have commissioned, I think, I believe they've paid £50,000, £50,000 I believe for the feasibility work, which we completed by the end of this year. And then from that, there'll be a bid for constructing the actual off-rue facility which would run from the city centre all the way along the A61 north of the Sainsbury's towards Harris Road South junction. So there's a significant number of junctions and length of cycle track to be provided. As I say, the feasibility is ongoing, it started, but it won't be complete until December.
So why does liability for this fall on the council rather than, you know, the private sector taking the opportunity to, you know, to do their bit?
I accept that you can do your bit, but the modelling that was undertaken for both the two consented schemes showed little in the way of adverse impacts on the highway network in terms of congestion and increased queuing. And then when you look at the modal splits, yes, we want to encourage walking and cycling, but the modal split for cyclists and pedestrians to this particular development was very low for pedestrians and cyclists. So you have to justify legally, in planning law, you have to justify that the level of improvement has to be commensurate with the harm that's being created essentially. And that wasn't happening here. So what we have managed to secure is at no cost the land that would be required for a future improvement, which will be steered by this feasibility work that's ongoing.
Doesn't seem like a great deal for the council. I mean, Aldi in their little leaflet talk about how they are so supportive of cycling. It states investments and improvements. So how much, how much are they actually putting into that?
As I've answered, really, they're providing the five and a half metres and all the street lighting columns back and the signing and lining across the A61 site frontage. And as you've pointed out, the gaps will be filled in by future funding bids from the councils steered by the feasibility work, and that's going to be the case. There's a pre-op on Rutland Road as well, on the corner there near the A61. And I think that there'll be land set aside for a junction improvement there as well. The gaps will be filled in by this feasibility work and future funding bids.
Yeah, which are not guaranteed, are they? It seems like a huge missed opportunity really for, you know, the private sector to be footing the bill here. I just wanted to mention, there was an image of the new junction and having been there yesterday, I just want to point out how misleading that image is. Because if you think about that road, that is a really, really busy road and nowhere on that design is any vehicle at all. I just wanted to point that out. And obviously with having drive-throughs, that's only going to make it worse. You know, essentially the nature of drive-through is people are coming to a business in a car. So I don't really understand why that image is so deceptive, but I just wanted to point that out. Because if you think about it, you're going to have vehicles turning in at speed, 40 miles an hour, then immediately facing a giveway, which drivers are not going to be expecting. Short sections of segregated cycle route are just not going to make that safe. It is fairly obvious that this new entrance is going to make it less safe for people. Um, it is fairly obvious that this new entrance is going to make it less safe for people on foot and on bikes. I presume that is accepted?
I don't particularly accept that critique, that, I mean, I think it's thirty miles an hour there anyways. I don't think anybody in their right mind would try and negotiate that junction at forty miles an hour. Um, as I say, there's been, there will be road safety audits. Um, Active Travel England acknowledged that that's a standard junction for the volume and the speed of traffic using the main road and withdrawn their deferral request, that there will be further iterations of design, but it is a compliant access arrangement.
I I do understand that it's compliant and it's below the trigger, and it's disproportionate to request something above the guidelines, but I think we need to be a bit careful as a committee of um of being swayed by that sort of regressive thinking, because...
No, it's probably Maryann. We're in questions, not comments, so is there a question there, please?
My question is, um, is it is it completely out of the question to add a condition that HGVs do not enter through this peniston entrance?
Um, through through the Chair, um, I haven't got the site plan for the for the northern section of the site, but most of the um service roads are servicing will 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 take place from uh Harri's Harri's Road, because the the courtyards are self-contained. Um, the 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 servicing for the Aldi uh would be from the from this site access, um, be because that that's just the geometry, the the service bay is at the northern end of the Aldi supermarket, so an articulated lorry would need to drive in through this site access off the A sixty-one, uh and then turn the first left at the internal roundabout as is shown on the plan. And then there's, the tracking has shown that the turning manoeuvre can take place at the northern end of the store, and then a an articulated lorry would then leave via the same route, and there are conditions attached relating to the timeframes that that can happen. But for the rest of the servicing, for the, there there are self-contained um service yards uh off the off Harri's Road, off that frontage. I mean, there will be some servicing to 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 the units below, but ones ones are drive-throughs, as you've mentioned, a drive-through coffee place, I'm guessing most of the um access to and from it would be via Harri's Road South there and not the um the A sixty-one um site access. I think I I think I've tried to answer your question there.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, in that case, bearing in mind what you've said, um, you know, I would like to propose a condition that um HGVs from any of the businesses are not allowed through that entrance. I don't know if I've got any seconded.
Chair, if 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 I may, um, I think that that as a condition, just purely from an enforceability point of view, would be very difficult. Um, from a practical point of view as well, if if the access is deemed to be safe and appropriate from a design perspective, it would be, i- i- it would be a very difficult condition for us to be able to defend in terms of it being reasonable.
Thanks, Laura.
Chair, thank you. Um, I understand, obviously, members are quite interested in the highway implications of this application, but I think it's just worthwhile reflecting on the national planning policy framework and what it says about highway impacts. Um, so it is covered in the report, just that development should only be prevented or refused on highway grounds if there would be an unacceptable impact on highway safety or the residual cumulative impact on the road network would be severe. Um, so just moving then on to um the discussion about a condition, as members all know, there are six tests to a condition, um, and one of which is that it needs to be necessary, and what that means sort of in a practical sense for you today is that you would be considering refusing without that condition. Obviously, on that basis, with the MPPF telling you when it's reasonable to refuse on highway grounds, you do just need to, um, you know, um, put your minds to to those issues. Thank you, Chair.
I mean, I'm not satisfied that um there isn't a a huge impact on highway safety, so so I'm satisfied that paragraph one one five of the MPPF, um, you know, that it is reasonable.
Thank you, Andrew. Laura.
Come back to something that Maryann said, the developer will be making a contribution because this development will incur community infrastructure levy, which could be used to fund anything we wanted to do, so they are making a contribution. And if I could just come back and ask Victoria something, because this was approved previously, the planning permission still applies, is that correct? So it would be very difficult to refuse it when it's extant, would it not?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, we do have an extant planning um permission already on this site.
Yeah.
Um, so one of the important principles there is regarding consistency in planning decisions and taking previous decisions into account. So, um, if members were, for example, inclined to um do something different with this application that wasn't done before in the last one, it may be something that you would sort of need to put your mind to as to why the previous application was acceptable and this one isn't, um, and that may be something that would need to then be potentially discussed at an appeal. Um, just going back to the previous point about um members and and their view on highway safety, just to remind members that in terms of reasons for refusal, really what we need to be looking for is um robust reasons for refusal that are substantiated by evidence. Um, so in in that respect, obviously, the evidence in respect of highway safety and impact on the highway network, you've got your highways officer here to look to for that evidence. Thank you, Chair.
Can we take the vote? Just on that point, I mean, it would have been nice to see an up-to-date road safety audit, because obviously we don't have the evidence in front of us. And on the um the point that Laura made on the exempt permission, I mean, I think it's fair to say that prioritisation of pedestrians and cyclists has changed since the exempt permission, uh, their safety needs to be given proper consideration, um, because that con- that priority status has changed.
Mark.
Yeah, I mean, I'd I'd say that pedestrian and cycle safety has always been paramount, even in twenty nineteen or whenever the first planning application was was considered. Um, as I say, there will be a road safety audit process. Maybe if the road safety audit feels uh HGVs should be restricted to Harri's Road and Harri's Road South and shouldn't be using the main site access, then the road safety audit process will will consider options for that. It it might be that they thought might be given to a height restrictor or something on the on the site access of the A sixty-one, so that service vehicles are forced on to only accessing the Aldi from from Harri's Road. These these are all options, but I'd rather rather than condition them or refuse them for those reasons now, what could be, the road safety audit process, there are four stages to it, and it, section two seven eight legal agreement that secures the highway improvements dictate that that has to happen. Um, I think the broad concept that we've got here is has been thoroughly looked looked into. Um, as I say, if if the road safety audit process points towards tweaks here and there or restricting certain movements, then that that would be explored within that process.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to, I want to say I'm deeply unhappy with many aspects of this, in particular the site access. You're trying to cram so many different needs into there, so many different traffic users. You've got act- active travel users, you've got pedestrians, cyclists, wheelers, you've got cars, and you've got tra- and you've got some trade which will be going through there. So, uh, I also think there's there's a very short, what you're calling a deceleration lane. Now, what will happen there is is if people will pull up to get in if there's a cycle going across, so you'll get a stop-start motion, which makes it dangerous for cyclists and pedestrians. So I I feel that this this junction is inherently unsafe. I've been there, I've looked at it, looked at there. It's too easy to get in and out, um, uh, and there are no, it it's unregulated with no traffic lights at the entrance and exit. So either make that better or create other access routes to in in and out. So I'm not prepared to vote for this application. It is very significantly different as far as this this particular bit of access is compared to previous applications that have been passed.
Ryan. Gary?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Uh, it's welcome. Right, we're in two thousand and nineteen. It's just a shame that the boots aren't on the ground yet, building. I hope it's not too long, if it's past a day that that can achieve that. Uh, the one oh six one is very welcome, very welcome, and it's going to be a good substantial amount as well. Um, and the hundred and seventy jobs is not to be sneezed at. I can remember sitting around this uh this board a few years ago when we passed the Aldi site, the person we spoke on part of Asda site, sorry, part from the Asda site, and he turned around about the jobs, and they said within one mile radius, there'd be eighty percent of local people going for those jobs, and we got assured later on that that happened. And I'm sure there won't be any people going from Leeds, Bradford, or wherever to come working this site, it will be local people, I'm sure of that. So I do welcome this, Chair, and I shall be voting for it. Thank you.
Anyone else comment? Tony?
Yeah, just a quick comment, Chair. I think it's a a a a great opportunity this to bring us a derelict site back into use. Uh, and I do understand that what we're trying to do with the with with pedestrians and cycling is something that we need to make sure that we we we, you know, we're compliant with, uh, but I I think it's a a a great opportunity to to bring this site back into into use, uh, and I'm going to vote for it, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Anyone else? Yeah?
Just I'm going to echo that as well. Um, I think it's a great opportunity um from all uh from the employment uh point of view, and also I think having the highways here and the questions that we've raised, we've uh stressed some of the issues, but I think uh we, I'm quite satisfied with the highways answers in terms of there's going to be ongoing um safety measures and um that is being looked into, so I I'm going with that, that at least it's being highlighted and acknowledged um on that basis, so I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, move to, dig up, please.
Uh, for for this proposal, is it proposal?
Right, I think we've voted before on the opening hours, but unfortunately, we've all forgot what they are, so can you heat them, please, so we know what we voted for? Yeah, if you look to there, yeah, then we'll all know.
Thank you, Chair. Eight till ten, Monday through Saturday, and then ten till four Sunday, those are our standard operating hours. Thank you.
Right, well, now we'll go to the vote then.
Um, for this?
For Chair.
For? For the recommendation?
For, Chair.
Right.
Against Chair.
Um, this proposal's added an unnecessary new hazard on a route that's part of a national cycle network of strategic importance. I'm not satisfied that it won't have an unacceptable impact on highway safety, so I'll vote against.
Voting for it, Chair, thanks.
For Chair, thank you.
For Chair.
Yeah, uh, with the with the officer's recommendation.
That is now passed, thank you. Yep, do we want to move on, or do we want a quick break? Yeah, so... six, spell F U L, Spartan Works, five three four, Attic Cliff Road at Sheffield, S nine three two, Peter Ollan, over to Jacob to present the case, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so this site comprises around two point three hectares of ex-industrial and commercial land in Attic Cliff. It's a full application for a mixed-use redevelopment of three hundred and sixty-two residential dwellings with two thousand and eight square metres of commercial floor space and the erection of a new pedestrian bridge. The application's presented to Planning and Highways Committee as it represents a major regeneration opportunity for the city. So the site is located just to the west of the main commercial high street through Attic Cliff, and it's bound by Attic Cliff Road to the north, Staniforth Road to the east, and the Sheffield and Tinsley Canal to the south. Um, and then to the east, uh, you've got Lovetop Road, and then the site abuts the grade-two listed Baltic Works, um, and then Effingham Road cuts through the site, leaving a roughly triangular plot of land at the north-west corner. Other than a small area of the Attic Cliff Road frontage which falls within the local centre, and then an area on the south of the canal which falls within a mixed-use area, the rest of the site falls within a general industry area as shown on the UDP proposal map. Um, but subsequent planning policies, including in the Lower Don Valley Master Plan and the Attic Cliff Action Plan, propose a wider mix of uses, including residential. And then in the draft Sheffield Plan, the western part of the site is allocated for housing, and the remainder of the site is shown as a flexible use zone, so in principle, uh, residential development in this location is supported. So I'll just take you through a series of site photos. So this is starting at the eastern end of the site on Attic Cliff Road. So those are the two commercial units that fall within the local centre on the top image, and then to the bottom is the frontage building from Spartan Works, uh, which was formerly part of Attic Cliff Steel Works, an industrial steelmaking complex from the Victorian period. So then going through that archway in the bottom image, um, here you've got a series of a mixture of nineteenth century and then more modern industrial sheds that form part of Spartan Works, which has been largely vacated. And just some more images through that courtyard. The bottom right-hand image is the largest building on the site, um, one of the more modern ones, and then to the other side of that is the canal. So then back out onto Attic Cliff Road, uh, so the top-left image is the former Sportsman Pub, um, which was then subsequently renamed Buzz Stop, and then next to that is another industrial building dating from around the nineteen fifties. Then moving again further west along Attic Cliff Road on the bottom two images, uh, you've got on the bottom left-hand image, an industrial building that was formerly part of Fitz Allen Works, which was a brick manufacturer, but that's now been heavily modified, and then the rest of the buildings on that site have been generally demolished and the site cleared. And then the bottom right-hand image is looking west along Effingham Road. Top two images on this slide are then looking the other way along Effingham Road towards the east, and the bottom two images show the vacant bath warehouse, uh, retail warehouse that's currently on that site. The bottom left, uh, right-hand image is the north-west corner of the site, um, so that's the junction between Att- Attic Cliff Road and Lovetop Road, and you can see the site slopes downwards towards that point. Thanks. So then the top-left image here is that largest building in Spartan Works, that's looking at it from Staniforth Road, which is back towards the eastern end of the site, and then the other images are sequentially walking along the canal from east to And then the other images are sequentially walking along the canal from east to west. So the tow path is on the southern side and then the application site is on the northern side to the right of those images. You can see remnants of canal walls and industrial buildings. And just more images taken from the tow path. The, you can't see it very well, but in the distance in the bottom left-hand image is the Bacon Lane Bridge, which is also Grade T listed. And then the bottom right-hand image is taken from that bridge. And the building you see there is part of the Baltic Works complex, which sits outside the application site. So the site is just kind of beyond those trees. So this application forms Phase One of the wider Attic Cliff water side regeneration project, which comprises about nine hectares of land which has been consolidated into the council's ownership. The applicant has entered into a development agreement with the council to bring the whole site forward for approximately 1,000 new homes in multiple phases. So this plan shows the Phase One development within the red line north of the canal and then a conceptual master plan within the blue line to the south of the canal for future phases of the project. The total number of dwellings in this Phase One application is 362 and that comprises 301 apartments with 61 townhouses. The accommodation mix would be 50% one beds, 33% two beds, 9% three beds and 8% four beds. And all new dwellings would meet the nationally described space standards. Although the majority of dwellings in this phase are smaller flats, it's anticipated that the phases south of the canal will have a larger proportion of family townhouses. It's also worth noting that the proposal has been significantly amended since it was first submitted. So it was originally for 447 dwellings and some of the buildings were significantly taller. So there have been amendments over several months and the images on this slide are only of the amended scheme which has been voted on today. But the committee report fully discusses the changes from the original scheme. Members should also note that although the property and regeneration arm of the council has an interest in the site as landowner, our role is separate as the local planning authority. So the application's been assessed objectively on its own merits as for any other proposal. Moving to the site plan for the Phase One application. The site's broadly split into two phases, or sub-phases. So Phase One A is the eastern part of the site and then Phase One B to the west. And then in between, you've got a new pedestrian bridge, which provides a link to the tow path on the south side of the canal and then onwards to the eventual Phase Two land. So Phase One A reuses the existing frontage buildings on Attic Cliff Road to provide commercial units accessed from Attic Cliff Road. And then there'd be a hard landscape courtyard with four new apartment buildings and those buildings are referred to in the submission as volumes. Phase One B is entirely residential and entirely new buildings with all of the existing buildings demolished. There'd be a more naturalised landscape with extensive new planting sitting above a parking undercroft, which allows for cars to be completely removed from the public spaces. And then there'd be eight new buildings or volumes constructed in that phase. And then across both Phase One A and Phase One B, there'd be integrated play in the landscaped areas. So there'd be some swings and trampolines and then there's a sports and recreation area in the middle of Phase One A as well. You can see on that site plan, I appreciate it's a bit small, but Effingham Road would be close to traffic, the section of Effingham Road that falls within the site. And that would be landscaped for pedestrian and cycle use only with cars diverted along Attic Cliff Road and Lovetop Road. So vehicular access would be retained for service vehicles only. So I'll just take you through the proposals roughly from east to west, starting with Phase One A. I'll whizz through them quite quickly, but I'm happy to go back and answer any questions. So these are the plans or the ground floor plan of the commercial buildings on Attic Cliff Road, which will be retained. So there'd be minimal structural alterations. The main change would be the erection of a new glazed link between the 1950s industrial building and the former pub. And then the structure on the other side of the pub next to Spartan Works would be demolished to create a new entrance into the site. In terms of the uses of those buildings, there's a high degree of flexibility built into the conditions. So the permitted uses would include any commercial, retail, food, drink or office uses under Class E, as well as community and learning uses such as art galleries and drinking establishments and events venues. But there would be a condition which would limit drinking and events uses to no more than half of the floor space. And that's just in the interests of preventing adverse noise disturbance to residents. In terms of retail policy, an assessment has been undertaken on a sequential basis to look at alternative sites available within the local centre. And it's been determined that there are no alternative sites within the centre that could accommodate a similar scale and quality of commercial development. But also more broadly, the retail assessment needs to be viewed in the context of a mixed use proposal, which would also have a substantial residential element and bring a new community into the area and increase footfall to the high street. So we consider that the commercial uses would be part of a scheme that has a positive regeneration impact overall and would assist in the regeneration of the local centre. So these are the proposed elevations of the retained buildings. You can see on that top elevation, the new glazed link. And it's also worth saying the public house would have its tiles removed and the windows bricked up and that would be painted with a new mural. So it'll become a piece of public art. You can see that in the coloured elevations later in the presentation. And then those are the rear elevations of the frontage building. So that's viewed within the courtyard. So then just working through the new buildings. So this is volume one, which sits adjacent to the canal, next to the pedestrian bridge. So that's a full-storey apartment block finished in diamond-shaped cladding with terracotta colour. And on the courtyard side, it's got external access decks to the upper floor flats. And that's the floor plans. On most of these slides, I've only shown the first floor plan because any upper floor plans above that generally have the same layout. You can see there that it sits behind the canal wall, which would be retained. This is volume 11, which sits next to volume one, further to the east. That's constructed within the retained steel structure of the largest Spartan Works building. And again, it's four stories. And that's some sample floor plans. And then volumes 12 and 13 are of the same design. Volume 12 sits at the eastern boundary and faces on to Stanifith Road and volume 13 faces on to the Phase One A courtyard. So that's all of the Phase One A buildings. This is an indicative design for the new pedestrian bridge, which would connect from the Phase One development to the south of the canal. And that would be constructed with a corten steel balustrade. So moving to Phase One B, this is the lower ground floor plan of that phase, which is essentially a large car park. So all of that, all of the parking for the scheme would be located in here. There'd be 229 parking spaces in total, which is a reduced parking provision for this part of the city. But the intention is that residents will be encouraged to use nearby trams and buses and walking routes, particularly along the canal. There are two tram stops within about 10 minutes walking distance. So it's sustainably located. And we think this is an appropriate site to reduce reliance on the private car. The strategy is to market the development as car-free, but sell parking spaces separately to the flats for those that feel that they need a parking space. So that is part of the strategy to discourage car use. And then there would also be bookable visitor spaces and a residents' car club. Further management details for all of that would be sought through condition. So the individual buildings within Phase One A, One B, sorry. So this is volume two, which is the first of three terraces of back-to-back houses. So that would be three stories above the parking deck and the upper floors would be clad in smooth black cladding. And then the lower floors would be coloured render with a different colour to each house. That's the floor plans of volume two. And then these axonometric views just show those house types. So although they're back-to-back, each house has a central light well, which would bring light to the rear of the spaces as well as the front. And then these are volumes five and eight, which are the other two terraces of townhouses. So I'm just showing the elevations for those, but the plans are the same. This is volume three, which sits fronting on to Attic Cliff Road. So that's a similar design to volume one in terms of the roof scape and materials. What you do have here is at ground floor level, so the parking would be located behind a mesh, metal mesh screen, which would have integrated public art, again, the details of which would be secured through condition. And that's some sample floor plans of volume three. This is volume six, which fronts on to Effingham Road, which will be pedestrianised. Again, it's four stories, including the parking deck, which would have that public art screening. The cladding for this building would be grey and it would wrap around, the tiles would wrap around both the walls and the roof to give a sort of modern interpretation of an industrial aesthetic. Very similar floor plans to volume three. And volume seven sits as a pair with volume six, very similar design, but just set back slightly from Effingham Road, where there'd be a first floor terrace for those residents. That's the floor plans. So volume nine would sit at the western end of the site, opposite Baltic Works. And that building would have a sawtooth roof profile, again tying into the industrial aesthetic of the area. It'd be five stories with terracotta colour cladding at ground and first floor and then blue-black cladding above in that diamond pattern again. And at the end of that, so it's apartment block, but the southern end, there'd be two townhouses, which would be finished in a similar manner to the other terrace townhouses next to it. So this is volume 10, which sits on that triangular plot, which is obviously quite a lot taller than the rest of the buildings. Admittedly quite a bold statement and it would act as a landmark in the area. We wouldn't usually accept such a tall building outside the city centre, but in this case, we believe there are exceptional circumstances as an opportunity to bring in a really high density community to act as a catalyst for regeneration. And we think the quality of the design does justify the height of this building as well. So on this slide, you can see the approach to materials. So there'd be reclaimed red brick work at ground floor and first floor, which would act as a sort of plinth. And then the upper floor would be clad in profiled black cladding, which would again tie into the industrial aesthetic, but also would reflect sunlight in different ways throughout the day with those ridges, which would provide quite an interesting appearance. There'd be corner windows which have glazing straight to the edge, which would appear almost as bites taken out the building, again providing some animation. And then the other windows would have projecting aluminium surrounds. You can see in those ground and first floor plans, there are two townhouses which wrap around a courtyard next to, at the base of that building, providing a degree of enclosure and again kind of playing on contrasting scales. And these are some sample floor plans of that building. So there's a communal roof terrace at seventh floor level and then on the eighth floor plan and then the rest of the plans upwards from that, you can see the form of the tower, which is not quite rectilinear, it's this sort of trapezoid form, which would have quite interesting articulated corners. And then this section image just shows the relationship of the tower to the rest of the development. And you can't really see it because it's a bit too small, but those model photos above provide a sense of scale in terms of how the buildings all relate to one another in the whole scheme. And here are some site elevations and model photos, which show again how each of the buildings relate to one another. So the top image is Stanifith Road, which is the eastern end of the site. And then the bottom is from Lovetop Road, showing volume 10 and volume nine. These elevations show the whole street scene from Attic Cliff Road. So the top one, which is very small, shows the entire frontage and then that's split into two halves. So the middle elevation shows the retained buildings and you can just about make out, hopefully, the second building from the right on there is the former pub with that mural painted on to it. And then the new buildings in Phase One B on the bottom image. And then these are some site elevations taken from within the courtyards of the site, looking the other direction. I appreciate that's small. And then finally the elevation taken from the canal of the whole site. So in summary, we do feel that the proposal brings substantial benefits in terms of regeneration and housing delivery. And it's a sustainably located development that's designed to reduce reliance on the private car. The development would deliver a biodiversity net gain and details of renewable energy measures can be secured through condition. Although the developers indicated an intention to go above the normal 10% that we seek through condition and work towards achieving net zero. The recommendation is subject to a legal agreement, which would secure improvements to surrounding bus stops and resurfacing of the canal tow path between the development and Donald Road. The final element of the legal agreement would just be to maintain pedestrian and cycle access to Effingham Road despite that section being closed as public highway. There hasn't been what we'd normally term significant public interest for this application. So it's being presented to committee purely because it's a major regeneration project. But there are some representations to acknowledge. These are discussed fully in the report at pages 125 to 127. But the most substantial points relate to heritage assets, canal improvements and the impact of noise and vibration. So in terms of heritage, we do feel that the scheme has been designed to sensitively reuse the most valuable standing buildings on the site. Whilst some of the other buildings will be lost, the regeneration benefits for high-quality redevelopment proposal are considered to outweigh those losses, which we have judged to represent less than substantial harm. There's also a condition to secure a heritage wayfinding scheme through the site, which would have sort of notice boards about the site's past. And there's a clause in that condition for consultation with local heritage groups. The requests for improvements to the canal tow path have been addressed through the heads of terms for the 106 agreement. It's important to note that there wouldn't be any new lighting to the tow path and that's for ecological reasons, but there would be new surfacing. In terms of noise and vibration, so there have been some concerns from neighbouring businesses, that that hasn't been fully assessed. There has been additional monitoring with reference to specific noisy businesses nearby. And the results of that do show that the development wouldn't be adversely affected by neighbouring businesses and the Environmental Protection Service are happy with that and with proposals for enhanced acoustic insulation, which would be secured through condition. I will just turn quickly to the supplementary information. I think you've had an opportunity to read it fully, so I won't read it out verbatim. But the main points are that there are comments from the Sheffield Conservation Advisory Group, which weren't included in the committee report. So they are set out in full in the supplementary. They are mainly the same points that were raised by Hallamshire Historic Buildings, which were discussed in the report. Again, around the extent of demolition. There were points around the height of new buildings and the massing in the original proposal, but those concerns don't seem to apply to the amended proposal, which is of reduced massing, particularly on Phase One B. The other element in the supplementary information is just a correction to the report relating to biodiversity net gain, which is now a mandatory requirement for applications made after the 12th of February 2024. I just made a mistake in the report. I put that it was before that date, but it's after. So this application was submitted last year. So it's not subject to that statutory regime, but it does achieve a biodiversity net gain anyway. And that's secured through the conditions that are in the recommendation. So that's the presentation from me. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Jacob. We have one speaker, which is Chris Thompson for the application. Would you like to take a... We have five minutes Chris.
Thank you. Thank you Chair. Hello officers and members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Chris Thompson. I'm founder and one of the directors of Citu. I guess I'm not going to advocate on planning grounds for this scheme. Jacob's very eloquently taken us through the detail and I don't think I can add to that. But I do think it's important just to give a bit of context around the project and our involvement and our ambitions for this. We're very much living in what is described as a perma crises at the moment. We've got a huge climate emergency that we're well aware of. We talked a little bit about the nature crises, biodiversity loss. We know we've got a housing crisis as well, we've got major issues to level up our particular corner of the, of the UK as well. And there's various other social issues that, that all need tackling. And I think it's with that context really, that I guess our ambition is formed as Situ. We don't identify ourselves as being a house builder. We're here to create a great place that is aligned with some of those challenges that we've got of our day. We can't solve all of them, but we can certainly make an impact. And it's an impact that really we're, we're looking to deliver on this particular project. Impact within Attcliff Water Side, but also within the wider Attcliff area and beyond the red line to create that ripple effect. So I guess with that, I just want to leave two, two comments really. One is that to give my personal and our company's commitment that this is acknowledging, one, that this is a hugely challenging project, it's really challenging area, there's a whole lot of obstacles to overcome, but we are really committed to that. We are very excited about it. And despite those sort of challenges, we think that this gives a really great opportunity to create an exemplar, not just in this city, but regionally, nationally and albeit internationally as well. And we think that's a, that's a commitment we want to, to offer to, to the city that, that that's, that's what we're here to try and deliver. And we acknowledge that's not going to be easy, but we think that's really important for addressing the crises I've just set out. And the second point is that you can't achieve really bold and ambitious things on your own in the private sector, you can't do it in the public sector on your own, it requires a partnership approach. And so I guess just final comment is to give thanks and also commendation to the way that this partnership on this particular project has evolved. It's, it isn't straightforward, but it's really commendable how we are navigating these challenges to ultimately deliver a great project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Can you come back on that, Jacob? Go to members' questions, Brian.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased on the site visit, to be able to see such good quality housing in the area. In, in a proper context as well, because you've got open space there that's actually been built into the whole structure, connected to the bridge. That was great. Good public transport in the area, I noticed as well, because you've got the tram routes, so a really good location. One small change I'd like to propose is, and it pops up in the supplementary information, and it's to do with the tiling on the sportsman pub, which is mentioned by the Conservation Advisory Group in Sheffield. So what they said is that there's no real good reason to remove the tiling from the sportsman pub. So I wondered if we could make that change, whether it comes as a condition or with just a quick discussion, if that's possible. And, and that will then fit into what is a great industrial heritage for the area as well. So I would like to put that forward as a suggestion, I wonder what the officer could suggest about?
Yeah, so I think we've assessed the pro, proposal on its own merits and we don't consider that building or the tiling on it to be of particular heritage significance compared to some of the other buildings on the site, although it does have some significance in, I guess, the mix of uses historically in the area. There was a pub there before that 60s building, so it was always a pub, really dating back to the early stages of the site's development. So I think, we feel that, that Situ have taken the right approach in maintaining that as a building, but turning it into something new, into something a bit sculptural, into a piece of art. And I think it's quite possible that the mural painted on that building will be more effective with the tiling removed. However, if members feel strongly and if Situ are amenable, then I don't see a problem with having that discussion. It could be, there could be an option to, to sort of find a middle ground of putting a directive on the decision notice that the developer is encouraged to, to look at options to retain the tiling, but it's not a, a legal requirement that, that's imposed by a condition. So it could be some feasibility work. So personally, from an officer perspective, we don't feel that it's necessary, but I'm happy for members to discuss it.
I must say, it's, it's going to be difficult for a decision when we've all not seen it. So that, that's quite hard, I appreciate that. I prefer a condition rather than a directive myself.
I'd like to second that condition, that the tiling is retained.
We have a condition on the floor with a second, so we need to vote on that before we go any further.
Chair, just, just, just before the vote, if I may, if, if there is going to be a proposal for a condition to look at retention of the tiling, obviously there needs to be some feasibility work there as well in terms of the practicalities of that in the longer term. So I think if, if members did vote for that condition, then I would have thought it would be a condition that we needed, would need to be constructed in a way that allows the feasibility of the retention of that tiling to be considered from a practical point of view. And if it is felt to be appropriate, then, then it's retained, rather than an absolute, because I, I don't think that would necessarily be reasonable and appropriate in this, in to take that decision here now.
Right. I think that's a, that's a really sensible way forward to, to maybe condition a feasibility study to examine it. Would that be appropriate?
Sorry, I'd suggest perhaps that we could go a little further on that. As, as been mentioned, people aren't perhaps familiar with the, the tiling aspect of things. I think perhaps if we could get a discussion around feasibility around retaining any existing buildings and heritage structures which can be added, if I was not actually compromising the overall design. For, for example, I understand as well that there's a World War One memorial located there. So I did have other comments to make, but as this has been raised, I think that it might be worth looking carefully at how we can, you know, retain things which are feasible to do so, including and, and as well as what councillor Hobbs Show has, has mentioned.
Chair, I, I understand what members are saying. Obviously here we're sort of, you know, reacting to members' comments sort of on the floor. But I think the, the planning officer at the very end, Michael, suggested in terms of a feasibility study would perhaps lend itself to a, perhaps a proposal for a condition, which invites a, a plan of how things may be retained, to be submitted and approved by a local authority. And then putting, and perhaps you could put in the directive there, that obviously the, the tiling is, is something that, you know, the planning authority expects to see referred to in that, being submitted and approved. But obviously, at, at the moment, there's different aspects of the application site that have got heritage aspects. So it just does seem on its face quite a broad thing to be sort of conditioning, remembering again, those six tests about, about conditions of being necessary and precise and enforceable. So something where, you know, they just submit something and we approve it and we work collaboratively to try where feasible to retain certain aspects, might, might be something where it enables officers to look at those feasibility works and what, and do that in a way that, that doesn't mean that we are, we're in the room putting a condition together which doesn't meet the six tests.
Right, Jacob.
Thanks Chair. So councillor Riddler, just to respond specifically on the World War, World War One memorial, that's actually not in the application site, that's on Baltic Works, which is next to Spartan Works, or actually, well, quite a lot further along than Spartan Works. So that was, that was a mistake, I think, in the Conservation Advisory Group's comments. So we wouldn't be able to secure that specific thing. Nonetheless, it is likely to fall under the listing for that building in any case. Turning to the wider point around feasibility for retention of heritage structures, the site has been subject to a heritage impact assessment already. And that includes studies of the feasibility of some of the buildings that were, were not proposed for retention. And those buildings were queried and the amended heritage assessment does assess them. I think my feeling as case officer would be that the scheme has a layout proposed on, on the plans that we're recommending for approval. And that plan does show the structures to be retained, which is all of the frontage buildings on the western, sorry, the eastern side of the site. And then all of the canal walls on that side of the site as well. And then there, there's another specific comment that was raised by Hallamshire Historic Buildings and by the Conservation Advisory Group around some pilaster bases on the eastern boundary wall. There's a condition specifically requesting their retention as well. And that's part of the kind of heritage wayfinding scheme. So my suggestion would be that we kind of stick to the specific issue of the tiling on, on the pub and the feasibility around that, rather than the whole site, because really that's covered in, in the plans that we're recommending for approval.
Just on the, on the tiling, I mean, wouldn't it, just another option? If they're all looking old, bedraggled and broken, that we replace them with tiles that are of the same colour and style and make so the, the building looks more like it was originally, rather than a 200 year old building that looks a bit rough. I mean, carvings in cathedrals and stuff are always being remade and remounted, aren't they?
So this is a 1960s pub, that, there was an, an older pub there before that I think was lost in World War Two bombing. So architecturally, we don't actually think it has that much significance, although it is, as I say, an indication of the form and mix of uses on the site. So I, I think if we were to lose the tiling altogether, I don't personally feel that that would be, there would be that much merit in replacement. Again, I'm, I'm happy to accept options within, within the condition wording, but my feeling is that it's kind of a feasibility study for retention or that they are just lost. And I, I think any replacement tiles, again, might, might compromise the, the appearance of any eventual mural that goes on that building, which i- is kind of the key design response to, to what to do with that building is essentially turning it into a piece of art. So I think if, if there was a decision that we wanted to retain tiles to form part of that, then that's fine. But I don't necessarily feel that new tiles integrated into that artwork would be of particular merit.
Totally.
Yeah, thank you Chair. There's quite a lot of new dwellings being put up here. And, and as per usual, we always get the same response when we come asking for affordable or even social housing. According to policy CS40, the co-strategy seeks to provision of affordable housing where this is practicable and financially viable. They always seem to come back and say, oh, well, it's not financially viable. And, and although I welcome the new housing that's being built there and it's needed, obviously because of the, of what we have to do, but why can't we somehow get to grips with affordable and social housing with some of these developments? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate your frustration on this. It's obviously something that we're working to, towards as a city and, and the draft local plan will get rid of any 0% affordable housing policy areas. So there would be a minimum of 10% across the city if that plan is adopted. At the moment, we only have the, the current policy framework and, and policy CS40 is supported by the Sill and Planning Obligations SPD, which sets out those affordable housing market areas. And unfortunately, from a policy perspective, we are in a 0% area on this site. So there wouldn't be any justification for refusing the application for a lack of affordable housing. And that's just the situation that we're in at the moment, but I do appreciate your frustrations on that.
Can I just go back on another one, Chair? Bird boxes and swift bricks, I haven't looked through to see the officer response on that. What's the position with that on this development, please?
There is a condition relating to habitat boxes, I will just find that.
I think I can, I can, can help you there, someone's just told me that it's only one.
Which number is it, Chris?
Only one, but we had quite a, quite a discussion at the last meeting about this. And it was stated there should be three per dwelling or per property.
I think you'll find, that was on that planning application and not on this one.
So I think it's integrated into the landscaping condition, which is condition number 27. So there's a bullet point in there which includes proposals for ecological enhancements, including habitat boxes for birds and bats. So that would include swifts and its boxes plural. Yeah.
Thanks, I was just, with reference to the Wildlife Trust's recommendations, I think that they, they are looking at a minimum of one brick per dwelling. And also have suggested that a 30 year biodiversity management plan should be provided for the site. Is that something that we can make a condition? Because I think we're all in unison that, that, that this aspect of, of development is one that should be given prominence and, and reflect its importance. And to me, it seems that a, a management plan would be a coherent and effective way of taking that forward.
So the 30 year management is included in condition 29, so that's part of it. So that would essentially be the implementation of the biodiversity net gain measures that have been submitted. In terms of swift bricks and, and habitat boxes, I think when that condition is discharged, so when, when the applicant applies to approve the landscaping plan and the ecological enhancement measures, our ecologists will, will take a view on the details provided. And, and we know that they are well in favour of maximising that as much as possible, including swift bricks and, and they have product suggestions on that. So, you know, if we get details that show, say, one brick, and it's, it's not the right product, then I'm sure that they would ask for improvements on that. So I don't necessarily feel the need to specify.
Ouch.
Thank you Chair, briefly. I welcome this application, I think it's very exciting. My concern is, has consideration been given to local infrastructure, things like doctors, dentists, schools? I know also Sport England are not particularly happy with it because there's a lack of sporting facilities, but in terms of the more important things like doctors, dentists, schools, does the location or the locale have capacity for 362 residential dwellings worth of people and families?
Jacob.
Yeah, I think similarly to affordable housing, we're, we're in a policy situation, which is quite limiting in terms of what we can secure at the moment. And then there's also the viability of the scheme in any case, but the, the policy position at the moment, again, it's in the Sill and Planning Obligations SPD. So contributions to primary school places can only be sought for developments of 500 or more dwellings. And then contributions to secondary school places or healthcare are only for developments of 1,000 or more. So otherwise, those things are expected to be funded through the central community infrastructure levy fund. Again, the local plan is seeking to change that to reduce the threshold to 10 dwellings. So on a far greater proportion of our major applications, we would be hoping to secure contributions to those things if there's an identified need. But also, I think it's just worth mentioning that this is an extremely difficult site to deliver viability wise, it's in what's currently a, a low value area of the city in terms of property and land values. It's got extensive contamination and various difficult things to deliver. And then there's also the, the net zero aim that the developer is going for. So I think if we were to go through the motions of that viability assessment, it might be that some of those contributions just wouldn't be affordable to provide anyway. And then we'd be having to make a balanced judgement about weighing that against the benefits of the proposal. about weighing that against the benefits of the proposal.
So can we come back to the tiles? Ricky?
Chair, thank you. I've just been looking at the conditions. We do currently have condition 35, which requires the applicant to submit and have approved the design of the mural there. So I wondered whether it would be reasonable, if members still want to take this forward, to propose amending that condition to refer to that submission, including a feasibility study of the retention of tiles within that. And obviously, that would be dealt with by officers in terms of whether it's feasible to retain any of the tiles as part of that mural. Thank you, Chair.
I just received a positive nod from Jacob that that can go in. So happy with that?
Sorry, Chair, just to be a pain. If that could be proposed, seconded and voted on, to amend condition 35, then.
I will propose that suggestion.
I'll second that, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll ask officers to amend the wording and share that with yourselves before we put it on decision notice, thank you.
We know at that stage we can vote, I think.
I just want to say, this is not just about housing, this. This is a key plank of the regeneration of the east end of Sheffield. I remember 40 years ago, working on Attic Cliff Village with Simon Ogden and Neil Jones. And it's finally happening after 40 years. It brings together the canal, the waterways, all the links with the new facilities down there, the Olympic Legacy Park, everything together. And it's crucial, this isn't just seen as a housing development. This is really part of the regeneration of the east end of Sheffield, and done in a way that's sympathetic to the heritage as well.
Anybody want to make any more comments? Can we vote then, please? Nicky?
I'm up here with this poll.
Four, Chair.
Four. Four.
I'm enthusiastically in favour of it, it's exactly what we need.
Thank you, Mark. I'm also for the application, Chair.
For the application.
Can't follow that, Mark, I'm for it.
Four, Chair.
Four, Chair.
Yeah, reluctantly for, I'm concerned about the infrastructure. I think we're just potentially creating, storing up some problems down the track.
But that application is passed. Thank you very much. Item nine, record of parent appeal submission decisions. Do we have anything on that? Not ready. Yeah, we'll just note those. Thank you. Dating time of the next meeting, on the 23rd of July, at 2pm. Thank you very much, everybody.